Evening, everyone. And welcome to the Town Council meeting, February 22nd. We moved the meeting to the Annex to better facilitate public participation on topics that are of interest to our residents. You can also view this meeting on YouTube. Just remember, effective today, February 7th, masks are recommended for those who are unvaccinated in municipal buildings. We are still suggesting that all residents continue to follow all recommended guidelines, such as social distancing, and if you're ill, not to enter into a municipal building. And to encourage all residents, you know, to visit free vaccination and booster clinics offered on Fridays here at the Senior Center, and also the town-sponsored free COVID testing site at the Annex. It's still my recommendation to residents to continue to use caution when they're indoors. And we have still a large number of senior citizens and residents with immune-compromised medical situations and children not eligible yet for vaccinations. We still need to respect and care for the well-being of others that will also be affected as well. I am going to also express my support to our Board of Ed, Education, and I'm asking residents to be supportive and respectful to our Board of Education members, Superintendent Dreszek and our Assistant Superintendent Longy, and to all of our teachers who on a daily basis do what is right and is in the best interest for our students. We want to make sure their meetings are safe and productive, and I'm asking everyone to put their differences aside and be respectful to all that are attendants at their meetings. The prayer, uh, excuse me, uh, Mike Ledwin, prayer, please?
Good evening, everyone. I offer a prayer of inner strength. Dear God, please give us the strength to face the day and to see the many blessings that it contains. Please give, please give us the courage to walk on, no matter how long the path or how many times the road, or how many turns the road holds. Please guide our thoughts so that we all walk in love and peace and with gratitude stamped within our hearts. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sheila, roll call, please.
Counselor Ledwin.
Here.
Counselor Mangini.
Here.
Counselor Pisner.
Here.
Counselor Santinella.
Here.
Counselor Ungary.
Here.
Counselor Bosco. Counselor Bosco is absent. Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Here.
Mayor Crisati.
Here.
Counselor Despard.
Here.
Counselor Finger.
Here.
Counselor Hopkins.
Here.
That's ten members present, one absent.
Fire, fire evacuation announcement. In the event of a fire or other emergency requiring evacuation, there are fire exits to the left and right of the stage front, and three fire exits at the rear of the auditorium, followed to the main lobby and exit doors to the parking lot. Next minutes of preceding meetings. Special meeting, January 18th. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the special meeting on January 18th? Counselor Mangini.
Second.
Second Counselor Pisner. Any discussions, additions, deletions? By show of hands, in favor? Against? Nine in favor, one abstention. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting on January 18th, 2022? Counselor Mangini, second. Counselor Pisner. Any discussion, deletions, or additions? By show of hands, in favor? Against? And abstention? Nine in favor, none against, one, uh, one abstention. There are no special guests tonight. Public communications. We're going to start public participation section, and I would ask that all residents be respectful and keep their comments concise to ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak. Residents should come to the middle aisle and speak directly to the microphone. Please go, give us your name and address. And we know that there are residents that are here tonight and interested in talking about the proposed tax abatement for the Winst, for Winstanley. Earlier this afternoon, we let everybody know that we're still working through various numbers, and we have not arrived at an agreement. So there will be no vote tonight. We're still interested in hearing from everyone, encourage you to come forward following participation. You'll hear from, uh, Mr. Winstanley, uh, our counselors will be able to say a few words, and from our town manager.
Excuse me, Mayor. Don't we have to vote on table in this tonight and not just made a decision by yourself and anybody else? We have to vote on table in this stuff. It was my assumption that that's the way it's supposed to be. It's not just that you guys decided as leadership that we're going to just not let these people here vote or have an opportunity, but if it goes voting that we don't, that we table it, then I think it's done properly. I, I don't know, I don't know if anybody else agrees or disagrees, but that's the way I look at it. Thank you.
Point of order, uh, point of order, Mr. Mayor. I believe a simple majority vote on the table will suffice.
Okay, do I have a motion to ta-
When it comes up on the agenda.
When it comes up on the agenda. Okay, very good.
It's, it's already-
Okay. All right, public communications. It's hard to see. Would you just state your name and address, please? Please.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Rudy Olunde. I'm at Fort Summer Wind Circle in the Misty Meadows subdivision of town. I'll try and make my comments brief as you guided us. A little personal history. I came to Enfield in 1990. I've been in Misty Meadows since 1999. I was the first house that was erected on my particular street in the neighborhood. So I've watched the evolution of the Misty Meadows neighborhood and surrounding areas for the last 21 years. In that time, I can say that the trend has not been a good one. The first event a few years back was the construction of the Amazon Fulfillment Center in, in behind one of the corners of the complex in Misty Meadows neighborhood. That was followed a few years later by this building that we're in losing its status as the local high school, and students having to go across town to Enfield High School. And now we're dealing with the Winstanley Warehouse being built across the street. In my view, the quality of life in this particular neighborhood and this area is going downhill. Let me take a few seconds, and I'm not going to read the entire article, so don't worry. But there's an article in the Wall Street Journal from Thursday, January 27th, dealing with a very timely topic. The title of the article is "Trucks Deliver Surge of Goods, Tearing Up Neighborhoods." The subtitle is "Traffic Unlikely to Die Down Even After the Supply Chain Clog Is Eased." And I'll read just a couple more sentences. The article starts by, "Trucks are taking over American roads fueled by a rise in the pandemic and online shopping and disruptions to global supply chains. Along the way, they're chewing up pavement, adding to congestion and infrastructure and infuriating residents who must contend with 18-wheelers and delivery trucks as soon as they pull out of their driveways. They're also causing headaches for state and local governments," that would be you folks, "that face multi-billion dollar bills to finance road upkeep and expansions. I don't think it takes a rocket scientist to foresee that the increased truck traffic is going to degrade the roads around town, make congestion around the neighborhood higher, increase things like air pollution and noise pollution, and frankly even make being out in the roads more dangerous for the school kids that are coming out of Hazard Memorial School and other folks that just walk the, the streets around here." Now, the ship, as far as the Stanley Warehouse, has already sailed. We can't stop it from being built, obviously. But I don't think it's an unreasonable expectation that the residents should, should have, that Winstanley should pay its fair share to offset some of these costs. So I think it's the proverbial salt in the wound when we come to hear that there's a consideration of tax abatements for these folks. They should at least be paying their fair share to maintain the infrastructure and maintain the safety in the surrounding area. I'll conclude by saying, this is just one more event that is causing many folks that I've spoken to to start wondering if they're going to stay here, in town, in this area, especially those of us that are a few years away from retirement or in retirement. The question increasingly is becoming, is it even worth it anymore? And in many cases, the answer is no. So I ask you to think about this carefully, do the right thing. Any of you who have been in town for a while, and I recognize names like Mrs. Mangini's and others, know that this town has a history of giving businesses tax abatements. The logical result of that is that the tax burden falls on the residents and the personal property owners. A few years ago, one of the incumbent mayors was running for reelection outside a Stop and Shop in Town. I was coming out and I happened to ask him, "Why are our taxes in town so high? Why do we give these tax abatements?" In his response, I'm not saying it verbatim, but I'm pretty close, was, "Well, if we don't do it, the next town over will do it, and we lose out." Well, I understand the competition for business, but these abatements have to stop. We have to put the stake in the ground some way, somewhere, and say, "No more." So in closing, I'll just say, please give this its due thought. And I don't say it as a threat, but as a fact. Most of the people in this room and in this area are going to be looking closely at your decision and remembering where you come out at the next election cycle. Thank you for your time.
Excuse me, just a reminder, uh, first round, uh, five minutes, and if necessary, you can come back up, second round, for three. Thank you.
Lucian LaFave, 54 Kimberly Drive, Enfield, also Commander of American Legion Post 154. I'm not here to talk about tax abatement. Sunday, February 13th, St. Pass Church, 11 o'clock mass will be Post 154's 74th Annual Four Chaplains Mass and the 79th Anniversary of the Sinking of the USAT Dorchester and the legendary Acts of Selflessness of Four Army Chaplains Onboard. Roman Catholic priest, Father John P. Washington, Rabbi Alexander D. Goody, Reverend Clark V. Pulling, a reform minister, and Reverend George L. Fox, a Methodist minister. The self-sacrifice of the Four Chaplains was a heroic act. It was not only a heroic act aboard the Dorchester, but it was the identity of these four young men representing three great faces of the American people that add symbolism to their sacrifice. No casting director in Hollywood could have selected a better cast of characters than these four to portray the basic unity of the American people. On the morning of February 3rd, the USAT Dorchester was streaming, steaming along the frigid U-boat infested waters of North Atlantic when it struck by a German torpedo, triggering a massive explosion. The vessel was carrying 279, 200, 902 onboard bound for the US Army Base in Greenland. It capsized and sank in 20 minutes. As the ship sank, the Four Chaplains calmly ministered to the panic-stricken and wounded, attesting soldiers, assisting soldiers, and others boarding lifeboats. The chaplains gave up their own life jackets to save others. Survivors on rafts were awestruck as they caught the final glimpse of the courageous quartet standing together on a slanted deck, arms locked, and singing hymns as the ship slipped beneath the waves. They were among the 675 passengers who died at sea that day. There were 227 survivors of this tragedy. Keeping in the memory of the Four Chaplains alive is growing more difficult. Each year, the number of World War II veterans shrinks. According to Department of Veterans Affairs, of the 16 million Americans who served in World War II, about 240,000 are still alive as of December 2021. May we never forget the Four Chaplains and all who served to keep this country safe. Thank you. God bless America.
Thank you.
Good evening. Karen Mulready, 147 Cottage Road. I haven't been back in this building since 1983, so it was actually a treat to take a little walk around down memory lane tonight. Um, I'm not much of a public speaker, but this is important. And so what I'd like you to do is just pause for a moment and think thoughtfully about your decision. This is not a decision about if you're a Democrat or you're a Republican. This is a decision about the future of our town. It's a decision about your neighbors, your friends, your family, everyone that lives here. You see, I find it interesting that we have the word "field" in our town name, but there's no conscious effort, or I don't see one, to preserve fields nor open space. In fact, this is the exact opposite of the vision statement located on the town's website entitled "The Future of Enfield." If you read about our town's vision, it does not include being known as the Concrete Mausoleum of Connecticut, because that's what we're becoming. I am adamantly opposed to the proposed tax abatement program for Winstanley. I'm not opposed to their business. They have a great business model. I'm in business myself, but the business they have needs to be in industrial areas. It doesn't need to be in residential areas, and heaven forbid, it doesn't need to be on the wetlands between our only two lakes located at Enfield. I have been researching tax abatements, and usually there's a lot of benefits of these arrangements. I haven't seen any of these benefits been published. In fact, all of the properties that they have in Connecticut, there's hundreds of new jobs, thousands of new jobs. I know when they took over the Hallmark property, I think they employed 70 people as opposed to the hundreds that were employed there. In fact, in New Haven, they do have a tax abatement program with Winstanley. They bought 700 new jobs to New Haven. However, the city is currently struggling. I don't know if you've read any of the articles. They brought the 700 new jobs, but the city is struggling because of these tax abatement programs. According to an article by Thompson Breen, Winstanley only paid 815,000 less in taxes in 2019. And Yale, and this was for the Yale-oriented parking garage, which they desperately needed. The problem that these tax abatements have and what's created for New Haven is that 60% of the city's real estate is tax-exempt. So I think when you make your decision, you need to think about how many businesses we have that are tax-exempt and how many abatement arrangements you have, because right now, they have a shortfall in their city, and they're looking at actually taxing Yale as a nonprofit. Is this the direction we want to go in? Do we want to start taxing nonprofits to make up for that shortfall? In closing, please think thoughtfully about your decision. Do not just listen to the comments. I know some of it's difficult. Do not just sit here and appease us. Take action. And please take the right action by voting no to the tax abatement, so Enfield and its residents have a future we can all be proud of. Be brave and do the right thing.
Good evening. I'm Randy Daigle. I live at 55 Cottage Road. I'm a little perplexed that this is even being considered when you guys overturn to allow drugs to be sold in this town because you wanted to increase the tax base and, and get more revenue. But you're allowing a multimillion-dollar company come in and destroy your roads that you guys will all be on, that we will have to pay for, and consider giving them thousands of dollars' worth of tax breaks. I just don't understand how those two work. The town of Enfield has a lot of land that we own. There's a, an industrial park on Phoenix. We, we have a golf course there- We have a golf course there that the town purchased all this land to do a proposed golf course there. Why don't we just give them the land and have them do it over there? The roads are going to be so damaged that they're going to be millions and millions of dollars. Right now, we have at least one, if not two tractor trailers that go down Cottage Road a month. Our road is an average of 16 feet wide. The proposed plan has the exit and out as emergency or as a convenience exit down the back of Winstanley, coming all the way down, all the way up Cottage Road. Our road is 16 feet wide. If we have somebody on a bicycle, a car parked in the road, they're not getting by. The drawings on, that you guys looked at or that they have, show this humongous road. It's a pretty picture, but it's not accurate. Our road is 16 feet wide in four different places. Some areas, it's 20 feet wide, in one area, it's 22 feet wide. But the majority of it, if you can't get through the 16-foot, you're not going anywhere else. That 16-foot is right at the beginning by the bridge. And so now, what they do is they go there, they get stuck, and they have to back up, all the way back up. So I really think that you guys need to reconsider, one, the tax abatement, two, even allowing that road to be coming through a residential area. It's a beach community. We have kids that are on the play in the street, like we all used to do, and now we drive through town and we're discouraged because nobody's doing pickup games, nobody's playing around. Well, our kids do, but now they're going to be in danger. So I'd really like to have you guys really consider the tax abatement and consider the fact that there are going to be so many more tractor trails, over hundreds of them per month, per week. So please vote with your heart and think about if you lived in this neighborhood, you'd be in line with the rest of us. I commend you all for doing what you do. It's not easy, and it's not easy getting looked at by your neighbors, that people that you care and we are friends with. We just ask you to consider it. That's all we can do.
Matt Schmidt, 1304 Vigolo Commons. Good evening, Town Council members. I am here to speak against the proposed tax abatement for Winstanley Enterprises for their property at 113 North Maple Street. The purpose behind the concept of tax abatements for commercial properties is to attract the business to an area. On this crucial measure alone, the proposal fails. I mean, Winstanley, Winstanley is already building on the site. It's here. You can't miss it. I'm sure you all saw the towering walls of the concrete fortress on your way in. So Winstanley obviously did not need the encouragement of an abatement, and it still does not. As their own website asserts, quote, "Winstanley has been at the forefront of building a prime warehouse portfolio in central Connecticut and Massachusetts where surging demand has occurred due to compressed, compressed delivery timeframes." What does this mean? It means that Enfield has a geographical advantage that Winstanley recognizes. Winstanley wants to be here. We don't need to pay them to come. It should already be obvious with all the other properties they own in town, which accounts for almost 20% of their property portfolio. Enfield attracts Winstanley because of our location. Even Winstanley's leasing advertisement for this property calls the property, quote, "ideally located." Again, we don't need to throw money at them, so while we should welcome their contribution to the growth of our town, we surely do not need to dole out unnecessary enticements to them. On these grounds, this abatement should be rejected. There is no legitimate argument for this giveaway. I have another concern as well with how an abatement would affect the assessment of other properties in town. The abatement proposed would set the valuation of this property lower than it actually is. If the assessor's office uses this property as a comp for other commercial properties, would then those properties be assessed lower than they really should be, reducing Enfield's grand list even further? One example of a comparable property is a warehouse being proposed on 35 Bacon Road up by Shaker Pines that just so happens to be another Winstanley property. Is it reasonable to conclude that the tax bill for that property could be affected by a decision on this property? I think this question needs to be answered definitively even before a vote is taken. Finally, I think it deserves mention to juxtapose this council's seeming willingness to aid a large corporate entity like Winstanley, while on the other side of town in Thompsonville, where I live, Ms. Cocktail's home is being taken by this council through eminent domain. Now, I've been coming before you recently, speaking out against the council's taking of Ms. Cocktail's home. For those who are unaware, in a curious course of events over the last few years, the town council decided that a house, a road, and some railroad tracks, which have coexisted for 100 years, can no longer coexist. And so 79-year-old Ms. Cocktail is to be removed and her house taken. Unfortunately, it looks as though the fate of Ms. Cocktail and her home will not be undone by this council. But the difference in how Winstanley and Ms. Cocktail's situation are handled by the town is stark, and it should be kept in mind when any of us envision what they want this town to be going forward and what we hold important.
Kathleen Leveque, 10 Winter Way. Obviously, I'm here about the tax abatement proposal. I'm going to just respectfully request you all think very, very hard about the decision you will have to make on a vote. I also am inviting every last one of you to my home. I'm intimately acquainted with the property that the Winstanley building is now occurring on because it's in my backyard, and I don't have 30-foot-tall trees blocking what I'm seeing on a daily basis. I'm new to the area. I moved here to be closer to my children. I've retired to this area. I knew this project was happening. Unfortunately, I did not find that out until the night that my full deposit was sent in on the purchase of my home, which, by the way, I love, and I love the neighborhood. And I think it's a shame what's happened, but that's water under the bridge now. So all we can do now is hope that you really, really think very strongly about why you would give this corporation a tax abatement. What are they doing for Enfield? What are they doing for the surrounding community that has to live with them on a daily basis? The worries that are there for parents, for children coming and going from the school, everything. You have a beautiful senior center that's right there as well, where there's a lot of traffic coming and going. There are numerous reasons why you really need to think very hard about this. Again, I'm retired, and I welcome every last one of you to come into my home and see what I have to look at every day and what now I worry about as a retiree. Will I be able to afford to stay in this area as a result of, if this tax abatement goes through? Because what happens to my property value as well as my neighbors? And is it going to be worth it for me to stay here and try to finish building my life here? So again, I respectfully request you think very, very hard about this, and the door is always open for any one of you, including Mr. Winstanley, should he come to want to see what he's done to our neighborhood.
My name is Lisa Bachelor. I live at 6 Dear Run, Misty Meadow neighborhood. Good evening, members of the Town Council. I'm speaking before you tonight in regards to the proposed tax abatement being sought by Winstanley Enterprises for 113 North Maple. Many residents, including myself, are opposed to this proposal. In fact, I have not seen one resident in favor. Per the tax abatement guidelines on the town website, in part, it reads, "The town of Enfield is committed to the promotion of economic and commercial development and an ongoing improvement in the quality of life of Enfield residents." I fail to see how this massive distribution center qualifies for an abatement. It is not generating jobs, nor does it provide any services for the residents of Enfield. What it will generate is major truck traffic that will deteriorate our roads, create noise and air pollution. This certainly does not improve the quality of life for the Enfield residents. What happens when the lower tax amount paid by Winstanley Enterprises is not enough to repair the infrastructure? Unfortunately, the residents will be expected to live with these conditions, or will our taxes go up again? We have already seen what happens when costs rise and they're not accounted for, as in our new additional fee for yard waste and trash removal. On November 3rd, 2021, the Enfield residents voted for new members to the Town Council in the hopes of changing the same old, same old. I ask that the old practices of putting the wants of a business before the needs of the residents of Enfield, it needs to stop. Please vote no. Please vote no for the abatement for 113 North Maple.
Good evening. Lori Parker, 105 Cottage Road. Just wanted to express that I am not in support of the abatement. The current proposal is not the original agreement that was discussed. It's actually giving more dollars off the tax, and it needs to be relooked at. I don't think it's fair that the tax burden is on the residents with increasing our taxes and fees on our trash cans and farmers that are losing their tax status and having to pay more. The strain on the services, such as the fire department, will not be getting their fair share of the taxes, but they have to fight these fires, and if there was a warehouse fire, it could be catastrophic for them. The strain it's putting on our services, and they're not getting their fair share of the taxes. I also think there should be a limit to how many abatements are given to a company or even a limit to one at a time. Winstanley Enterprises is currently still receiving an abatement on Hallmark, and we also wonder if he'll be asking for another one for 35 Bacon Road. I'm all for reuse and encouraging reusing buildings and giving us incentives for the reuse of empty buildings. We have plenty of them, and I'm asking, what are we encouraging for the town of Enfield by soliciting more new buildings? I was reading the 1999 Plan of Conservation and Development, and there was a statement in there that showed 68% of Enfield was already developed, and if that pace continued for 14 years, we would be built out. And that was 23 years ago. I think we are there. I have many neighbors that have moved here because they moved out of towns that were putting buildings in their backyard. And I've been here my whole life, and it's becoming unrecognizable, and it's sad to think that moving out of Enfield might be my only option.
Good evening. My name is Tony Rena from 12 Ryfield Drive, and I'm here to, first of all, thank you for being transparent and letting us see what this current Winstanley proposal was. I think that's the first time we've ever seen these things come out. So that's a plus. Now, I don't know how far that's going to go, but just a little background. Winstanley is a $25 million revenue corporation, at least that's the last number that I could dig up. They have over 125 properties with over 20 million square feet. They currently own three, three properties here in town, and they're obviously building right across the street, and they want to build a 35 Bacon Road. I would just throw out some of the figures that I was able to figure out on that nifty little tax calculator that's on the town's website. If they were to pay their full 70%, you know, taxes over the course of seven years, they would be paying over $7 million, $7.1 million in taxes. If you go with the seven-year plan that they're throwing out, they're going to pay $6 million. So it seems like the town is getting short-changed there. The other thing that I would like to bring to your attention is back in 2020, there was a town roads referendum, which was passed. The stretch of Moody Road that Winstanley plans on moving their trailers through is up to be reconstructed starting this year. So my question is, where the heck are those trucks going to go if they're going to go to that warehouse, which they plan on finishing sometime this year? I would think that the difference in having them pay their full load would more than pay for that stretch of road that they're going to be traveling on. So that's another consideration. I would just like to say that since you're giving money away, let's give some money to the seniors, and let's give some money to the veterans, okay? There's more than enough. If you guys are going to just hand it out, let's give it where it really belongs, because everybody's assessment went up last year. So let's make it fair, okay? No one builds a $39 million building on speculation. That building was already sewn up, and the same thing is probably true for Bacon Road, all right? He's not going to spend that kind of money and leave that building vacant. So let's do something about it. Vote no.
My name is Dorian Kibbe. I'm from 20 School Street. Before they put this building up, and there were rumors about it, and nobody wanted it, but the Town Council kind of lulled us or tried to lull us into accepting it because it would bring business, it would be good for the town. And now we find out that there's going to be a tax break for them, and that was the only thing that they would have been, you know, providing for the town. We're not going to be bringing more people here. They can, they can go from where they were working in Massachusetts, or they could just, you know, move to Long Island or whatever. They're not even going to stop here for gas, really. And it's offering nothing to us, so it's like adding insult to injury. The building is ugly. I drive by it daily, and I can't stand it. What was a beautiful landscape is now this big, ugly, gray monster. And the thought that it's not even offering anything to us is, it's not acceptable at all.
Good evening. My name is Angela Foss, and I live at 16 Crescent Beach Drive, and that is part of Crescent Lake, the Crescent Lake Tax District. I wanted to first mention, I had sent you a PDF today, and I hope you got a chance to look at it. The PDF is entitled "Rethinking Property Tax Incentives for Business." And part of what is in the executive summary of this is, while there is little evidence that tax incentives are as effective, are an effective instrument to promote economic development, they cost state and local governments $5 to $10 billion every year in forgone revenue. And the reasons are, incentives are unlikely to have a significant impact on a firm's profitability after property taxes, since they are a small part of the total cost for most businesses. And tax breaks are sometimes given to businesses that would have chosen the same location even without the incentives. When this happens, property tax incentives merely deplete the tax base without promoting or providing economic development, which is what is happening with this property, as we all know. On page 61, it says, "First question about as to whether you should have criteria for granting local tax abatements. Question one: Will the firm asking for the tax incentives locate elsewhere? Would a significantly high probability yes or no?" And if it says no, you do not grant the incentive. And that's question one. There are four, and for every one of these questions, if you look at page 61, you'll see that none of these are something that Winstanley would be wanting to do, because they've already begun construction. I sent you an email, and I said in it, the email that I sent, "The taxpayers of Enfield, your constituents do not want this abatement to pass." This is not- This is not based on emotion, this is a fact. Why? Because your focus should be on assisting the taxpayers. Is Wynn Stanley bringing in thousands of jobs? No, nine or 10. Let's instead use this money to assist our seniors and veterans with their tax bills. Let's instead use this money to put new roofs on the school buildings that are leaking. Our children are in these buildings every day and the health of our children should be a high priority to you. Let's instead use this money to repair our roads. Let's instead use this money to assist those lower income residents. Let's assist those lower income residents and I'm thinking mostly of those in Thompsonville who are, my husband is a landlord there, who have been seriously impacted by the COVID-19 health crisis. Please listen to the voices of the residents, your constituents. Take a note of the poll regarding this on Enfield's forum. The residents have a lot to say and their points are all valid and your position should be to put the residents first. Do not approve this tax abatement. It would benefit no one except for Wynn Stanley and it only puts a little extra change in their out-of-state pockets. Keep our green spaces green and in addition, protect the wetlands between our two lakes. Thank you.
I live on 353 North Maple Street. Unlike every other person here, with the possible exceptions of the council members and Mr. Wynn Stanley, who I've heard is present, I am here to speak in favor of this tax abatement. Last November, there were four referenda on the town ballot requesting authorization to issue a total of $48 million in bonds and notes. 39 million of these bonds were intended for repairs of things that other speakers have mentioned, essential existing infrastructure, namely roads, the roofs of municipal buildings, especially the schools. So when I see numbers like these on the ballot, knowing that the bonds will ultimately be paid with tax revenue that I contribute to, I assume that we as a town are not in a position to give money away. Given that contrary to the fiscal posture I had assumed, we are in essence prepared to write checks to large and profitable corporations, I decided that I'm okay with this as long as I can get an abatement too. My wife and I homeschool our five children. Enfield's current cost per school child per year is $17,964. So by paying our absurdly high property taxes in exchange for, in fact, only one real service that we don't pay for, the police, for which I'm grateful, we are saving the town $90,000 a year. Your dollar per investment on Wynn Stanley is going to be nothing like that. So why not? Let's hand huge tracts of land over to big business with minimal responsibility to their neighbors. I'm fully in favor of this embarrassing failure of fiscal responsibility so long as I can get in on the municipal gravy train. Jonathan Swift, references aside, I would like to respond briefly to two remarks earlier speakers made. The first was a question which was meant to be rhetorical. Do we want to next tax our nonprofits? The answer is yes. I am a board member at St. Nicholas Orthodox Church, which is also on North Maple Street. Last week, our priest received notification from the town that we will begin to be taxed on a portion of land that we owned that was a part of the existing lot when we purchased it. I'm sure it's just a mistake. The second item, someone said this is not a Republican or a Democrat issue. I want to echo that sentiment and say the last couple of years have been a very divisive time. But one thing all Americans can agree on, regardless of what level of welfare they would like for individuals living below the poverty line, no American, Republican, Democrat, Green or Libertarian wants corporate welfare.
David Stopinski, 20 High Metal. Just want to say, when all of you first moved here, the first question you asked before you bought a house was, how much are my taxes going to be? Well, Wynn Stanley's not an idiot. He asked the same question. How much do I got to pay for taxes on these properties? He knew what his figure was going to be. And then he probably sat there and sat down and said, you know, let me think about this. Let me see if I can get these fools to take an abatement on the property. So that way I can save a couple million here and there on all of my property. Don't be fooled in for it. He knew what he had to pay when he came here, so let him pay it. Either that or like the last gentleman said, give us all our abatements and let's not take care of the schools because the money that he's going to save could go a long way in our kids' future in this town. Thank you.
Kathleen Sarno, 102 North Maple Street, Unit 6B, Maple Heights Condos. I live directly across the street from the Wynn Stanley building on North Maple. Thanks, Adam. So I'm here to speak tonight about you to consider voting no on the tax abatement. This is not bringing any jobs to Enfield. Most times we abate properties, we abate them because they are bringing taxes and money to the town. This is bringing nothing to our town. So why give them the abatement? It is not, sorry, I'm reading off my phone, so. It, it doesn't have a positive impact on any of the abutting neighborhoods, schools or churches or roads. Now, I know that some people think, well, Elm Street and Moody Roads are only going to be the town roads that are affected. And yes, that's true, but North Maple is also going to be affected and I realize it's a state road, but nonetheless, we still have to drive it. So that also will be affected and how can we guarantee that the state's going to be there fixing and doing what needs to be done to these roads? We have no control over the state. I do support new business in Enfield. I am a, I'm born and raised in this town, third generation, so I do know it very well and you say my father must be rolling over in his grave, but it is, I want the business, but it just seems that this part of town, they're going to be putting up all of the buildings in this part of town. Wynn Stanley isn't stupid, he has deep pockets, he's here for a reason. He wants Enfield. Whoever spoke earlier was very correct in what he was saying. They want to be here in Enfield. Why give them the tax abatement? Let them pay to be here. They're not doing anything for us. I do not abate, I don't live in the neighborhoods abutting, I live right across the street. I have absolutely no buffer from that building. If you pull out of my driveway, I get to see that lovely, lovely cement building in front of me. There are no buffers, there's maybe a row of bushes that correct it. My cell phone service isn't the same. I can't tell you how many trucks are turning around in our small little complex because they don't know where they're going. I think they think they're going into Harthorns when they're coming into Maple Heights. Realize they made the mistake, we have a little cul-de-sac at the top, they drive through the whole complex to turn it around. There is so much noise and traffic that has, I, I live right across the street, from the day they started, I can tell you the issues, the noises, the backup trucks, the garbage, the roadkill, our properties declining. Am I going to receive a tax abatement for living across the street from this? I, I really, I encourage you all to vote no. And if there was anything promised during these executive sessions, like you were in the one before this meeting tonight, I think that you should go back on your word. If anything was promised to this gentleman, we'll go back on it. Nothing's signed, nothing's written in gold. If this, why are you afraid of saying no to this? Why are we even here begging you for this tax, not to vote no on this tax abatement? The people do not want it. Why are we even here? What, what is it that you don't understand? I, I'm, I'm not understanding it. You should be voting tonight. You keep postponing it, postponing it, postponing it. For what? Thank you.
My name's Elizabeth Davis and I reside at 201 North Maple Street. Pretty simple. I don't understand how we can charge the residents' fees for everything. Our sewer waste fees has been going up and up. Now we even have a trash fee that everybody voted unanimously saying, yep, let's just add this for the extra can, the $80. But we have an issue voting and we don't want to vote tonight, which is, why do we want to give somebody a tax break and then hurt the residents? I'm not quite getting this. Who, anybody sitting up there that's elected? Who lives over here staring at this is what I'd like to know. Any of you guys actually live in this neighborhood and stare at this? Because I guess, you know what? Don't even answer it. None of you do, because if you did, you'd immediately be voting no and you wouldn't even want this in your backyard, but it's not personally affecting you. I know there's a few of you that are really fighting and doing a lot and you know what? I thank you for being a true voice to the residents of this town. We see you, we hear you and we will remember who was the true voice to the residents of Enfield and who did a backdoor deal on the residents. Thank you.
It's always a mistake to follow Liz. Hello, my name is Vinnie Westlees. I live on 12 Deer Run in the Misty Meadows neighborhood and my property is in the same neighborhood that I joined the Wynn Stanley property. And I'm going to keep my comments short because a lot of people have already, you know, said a lot of the statements that I'm going to make. But I live next to this facility and I'm affected by their presence there now. All summer long, all we hear is the noise of backup alarms and I don't even live as close as people are on, on winter way. All I hear is the noise of beep, 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 beep all day, all along, six days a week, from 5:00 AM in the morning till 6:00 at night. It's like they have a policy that they're not allowed to drive forward on site because all they seem to do is drive backwards. We, we work at home now, we want to enjoy our backyards and we really can't because the, the noise drives you insane just sitting in your backyard trying to do anything when all you can hear is beep, 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 beep constantly. The, the quaintness of our area of town, the Misty Meadows neighborhood was a quiet neighborhood. Hazeville is a, is a nice crane section of town. This is all gone forever now because we have a monstrosity of a warehouse built right in the middle of it. It's going to increase truck traffic, it's going to increase noise, all the things that are, everybody already talked about, it's going to happen, it's our reality now and we haven't even started moving trucks through the area. And, and to think that because Wynn Stanley is negatively, negatively affecting the area of our town, now we should give them a big break on taxes because of it. It just doesn't seem right to the residents of Enfield that we're the ones doing the suffering and they're going to get the benefit of it. Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Warner. I own 74 West Shore Drive and I want to thank you all for having this tonight. This is fantastic. I realize that my last 25 years of working 80 hours a week has kept me from a lot of this stuff and you got my attention. I am definitely going, you're going to be seeing my face much more. So first I'd like to say that nobody here is against bringing businesses to Enfield. This is a great idea, but they have to be appropriate for the area, they have to be appropriate types of businesses and I would really like to see us not destroying our precious farmland, our precious wetlands. To do that, I've heard a lot of things about tax abatements and not a lot of them are very good. Oftentimes, I, I, I'd like to say first that I would, I would approve that sort of thing if it were going to businesses that have, for people that have a commitment to Enfield, preferably people that live in our region, that would like to start businesses that will keep us from these last two years of supply chain issues. If we can become more self-sufficient in our region, we don't have to deal with the politics of trucking things from across the country, bringing things from other countries. So I'm sorry, I'm not used to public speaking, but I feel that this is very important. So for businesses that are going to be bringing in hundreds of trucks from early in the morning, perhaps all night, we've got a place for that, right by the highway. They won't be tearing up our roads that we have to pay for and they won't be polluting the environment with noise, pollution, confining it to that 91 corridor would be excellent. I didn't know anything about Wynn Stanley Enterprises, so I did a little looking around and in just a few minutes, I found out that they are a very self-contained company. They come with their own experts, so they're not hiring anybody in our region to do any of this work, even the construction. I understand at this building, there may, there might be nine jobs coming for our region. That's a lot to give up in taxes for nine jobs. I found out that in Chicopee, Wynn Stanley has a company that brought an overseas windowmaker. After a short time, they had hired several people in the area, that's what they were counting on in Chicopee. After a short while, they closed down, they got all these tax abatements. Actually, Wynn Stanley Enterprises, who owns the building, got all these tax abatements and now the building's empty. So this is, this is something that's happening all over the country. The businesses come in for the tax abatements. They leave as soon as they're, they run out and in some cases even before that and the taxpayer is still stuck with the bills and empty businesses, no jobs. One example of this for Wynn Stanley Enterprises is right here in Cheshire, in New Haven. Cheshire had a pharmaceutical company in a Wynn Stanley building. They ended up abandoning that and going to a new Wynn Stanley building in New Haven. So what happens is they, they keep going for the best tax abatements and the, the people that lose these businesses, these communities lose out on the jobs, on the taxes, on everything. I, on their website, it lists several businesses that they often do business with. One of them was Walmart. Walmart is, is notorious for a few things. One of those things is demanding tax abatements. They often leave abandoned cities even before the tax abatements are, are done. At one time, Mr. Wynn Stanley had said that he had two businesses to go into one of these buildings and, but he refused to say who they were. Don't we as taxpayers have the right to know who's coming and what they're bringing into One of the businesses is a business called Genzyme that's going in in New Haven. On their website, it says that they, I forget the word, bio. Basically, the definition is producing chimeras and like fake food. So I'm really not thrilled with the idea of Connecticut becoming the next Wuhan. Are, are those, those kind of businesses coming here? We have a lot of wetlands. What is the, what are the waste products coming out of this?
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
If you could, you know, I'll jump in a couple of seconds.
Okay.
20, 30 seconds, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to say something else about, we don't know much about, I personally don't know much about this company, except how they've been treating the people of Enfield. In the packet that you received, in the packet that, yes, I believe you received, there's a letter in there that supposedly went out to all the abutters. I only know a handful of people of abutters that got notices at all. And apparently, that's happened at this address as well. He claims in there, for the property at Hallmark, near Hallmark, that he has decided to give up all these plans in the interest of being a good neighbor. And yet, all of the points that he mentions there are things that are required by planning and zoning. So, my point is, we'd like to encourage businesses here, we'd like to encourage businesses that have a good business ethic, who are going to treat us properly, and help us become self-sustaining as a region. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, Town Council. My name is Jeff Foss. I live at 16 Crescent Beach Drive in Enfield. I've been born and raised in Enfield for 60 years, so I've been here a long time and seen what's going on. I'm here to tell you a little story. So this story is about cell phones. I'm sure you're all familiar with a company known as Verizon. And Verizon, to take on new customers, offers a brand-new cellphone, probably an Apple, to new customers and a wonderful discount on their service when you sign up with Verizon. Now, the problem with that is, they didn't offer that to the existing customers. And so, because you discount the new customers and give them a free cellphone, the existing customers get upset and jump ship. And that's exactly what they were doing. Now, where did the Verizon customers go? The Verizon customers went to T-Mobile. So T-Mobile comes along and says, we'll give you the same phone for signing up with our company, and we'll discount our service to your signing up with us. But at the same time, we're going to offer this to all our existing customers. So if you're a T-Mobile person, you can have a new phone too, if you're an existing customer, and we're going to give you the same discount price for signing up with our service package. The moral of the lesson here is, we are your existing customers, okay? And if you're not familiar with the name Jeff Foss, I happen to be the largest taxpayer for the town of Enfield for residential and commercial property. I have about eight to 10 million in property. So if you're going to give this discount to others, I would appreciate the same discount for all my properties. I happen to own most of Thompsonville. And that's where the money should be going. I am a resident of Enfield. I live in Enfield, I care about Enfield, and I have a lot of tenants in Enfield. So I believe, if you're going to do this for the newcomer, do it for the pre-existing customer who's been here his entire life. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sherri Jackson, and I live at 119 Cottage Road. Tax abatements began to lure businesses during the Great Depression. There are many articles that have been published saying that tax abatements simply don't work. Despite the significant policy innovation and economic development practices, there have been considerable information provided by researchers over its effectiveness and efficacy. The most empirical-rich modern research has reported no more than a modest influence of economic development practices on actual economic outcomes. And the name of those researchers are Fisher, Peters, and Reese. Moreover, even among those researchers who report the largest impacts, find that the public cost to achieving these effects are high. See the researchers LeFave and Hicks, Falk, Hicks, Gabe, and Crable. They did studies and found that, first, self-reported employment growth in firms receiving such an incentive was substantially overstated. Firms that did not receive a tax abatement were more accurate. Secondly, they found no positive, and in some ways, instances, and, sorry, in some ways, they found negative influence of tax abatements on job growth. Today, unlike the time of the Depression, workers are free to choose to work in a wide variety of communities. Most of us do. During my research, I found out that tax abatements are often abused by these large companies, who frequently become serial tax abaters, if you will. They collect the tax savings and then move on, leaving behind abandoned warehouses that assault the eye. Tax abatements create winners and losers. It is clear that the residents of Enfield lose and the wealthy landowners win. Offering corporate welfare is not something that these wealthy landowners even need. So why are we giving it? This is a bad idea and a bad deal for the taxpayers of Enfield. The taxpayers must make up for this lost revenue, while these large companies place additional, very high demands on our infrastructure. We do not get any breaks, and our taxes keep going up. And then we are asked to pay for the damages that these large companies manufacture. The town services that you and I pay for are given to these large businesses for free for years. These huge businesses are often, sorry, competing for the same consumer dollars that our existing businesses are after. So, when we all get our tax bills and look out from our front porches at the potholes in the street, in front of our houses and businesses, we need to remember how these policies and tax incentives have failed us. We have teachers who are burnt out due to this high demand of education in a pandemic. We can't find substitute teachers who will work for the peanuts we offer them. We need lots of new equipment and materials, and we could use this tax money to support our children, while also... While also giving our teachers, who are in dire need of a substantial raise, pay that equals their level of education and effort. Where is their break? Do they get to forego paying their taxes? Now, in every corner of Enfield, you will find a humongous cement monstrosity. And this kind of, is this the kind of place that we want to raise our children? Do we want Enfield to be the box store capital of Connecticut? I don't think so. I've only been in Enfield for five years. I've been to many meetings like these, like this one. And it seems that the hard-working taxpayer is not heard. We come to many of these meetings, speak to our elected officials, and walk away feeling like we have no voice. I hope that you will hear us this evening and consider doing some research into the drawbacks of such a gift. My research is clear, and I would like to definitively state that myself and most others in this room, and those who may be watching at home, do not want to grant this tax abatement. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening, Town Council members, and welcome to our neighborhood. My name is Karen LaPlante, and I live at 166 North Maple Street. My concern this evening is about priorities. Where should the Town Council put their priorities? Everyone wants something. Do we prioritize safety and security of our citizens? Do we prioritize a good education for our children and young adults? Do we prioritize health and welfare of our elderly and special-needs citizens? Do we prioritize good jobs and opportunities for our citizens? What about recreation, our farmers, our open spaces? You all may or may not know that I have been on the Conservation Commission for more than 10 years. We have continually asked for funding for small projects and open space acquisition. When Ray Warren was Economic Development Director, if any of you can remember who Ray Warren is, he was able to assist us in getting us a small grant for an information kiosk at the Barnes Boat Launch. I made sure there was information posted seasonally that would be of interest to anyone that visited the boat launch. I cleaned the graffiti off it when it was vandalized. But when it was a victim of an arsonist, and it was destroyed by fire early in one morning, the town would not provide us with the funds to replace the kiosk. We asked more than once. We were told there was no money in the budget. Yes, school roofs need to be replaced, roads need to be done, but not a couple of thousand dollars was available for a kiosk. The state goal is to preserve 21% of the land in the state for open space and farmland preservation. Enfield needs to preserve an additional 2,000 acres. 2,000 acres for Enfield to reach that 21%. Back in 2014, we met with the council and suggested the funding, did the mic stop? Okay. Requested and suggested that the funding we needed was between three and five million dollars. Like I said, the roofs, the roads, and other priorities. The abatement you are providing, Wynn Stanley, amounts to them paying taxes on only 44% of the agreed-upon assessed value over seven years of the contract, or the assessed value of $84,630,000. We are giving away $106,470,000 of assessed value. Did I say million? A hundred and six million. I don't know if the town did a similar program with the Mayfield Apartments just down the street. Based on the last three years of their assessed value for their property, the assessed total amounts to just over 99 million. So it looks like Mayfield will be paying taxes in three years what it will take Wynn Stanley to pay for all seven years. That's just one comparison. I don't know what the answer is. We need a good mix of business, residential, and industrial in the town. We all know industrial land only costs the town about 30 cents on the dollar in tax revenue that they observe, that they get. There's been many studies that can show you the exact amounts, and I don't have them in my head right now. But unfortunately, the residents aren't going to want to hear this, but it costs about a buck 30 to support residential, for every dollar of residential taxes. It really costs for services for the town more than what they pay. So, we all are getting the benefit of these businesses. But we need a good balance. We need a good mix. We need to be fair to everyone. And I don't know what the answer is, but there are a lot of families here that are still struggling with day-to-day bills. And I urge you to consider those residents and the taxes we are paying and have paid for all the time that we have lived here. Just one other note, on the reevaluation, I know there's been a lot of issues with what is called nonprofits, 490. Farmers and foresters have had issues with their farm and their abatements being rejected, their discounts being rejected for one reason or another. I urge them all, at this point, to contact the assessor, get a conversation going, make sure they file an appeal before the timeframe runs out. If they can settle it before then, they can always cancel the appeal appointment. But they need to contact the assessor's office and get the paperwork going, and they need to get those 490 designations back. And unfortunately, the Agricultural Commission, the Conservation Commission, I believe it's our consensus that we don't agree with how it was handled, and I'm hoping the council can do something about it in the future. Thank you.
Amanda Marquez, 8 Hoover Lane. It is to be fully understood that in regards to a Town Council meeting, the public does not participate in the decision-making, but they do provide input to the governing body, who then take that input into consideration when making decisions. The role of public communication on a topic must be clarified. If citizens perceive that they will have an influence on a decision, but in the end do not, they will be extremely dissatisfied with the outcome of the process. What is the purpose of asking constituents to come and speak publicly tonight on a subject such as the Wynn Stanley Tax Assessment Agreement? If not to take their opinions, concerns, and comments into consideration when voting on such matters? The Wynn Stanley property at 113 North Maple Street is a subject of much concern in our town, with neighboring citizens speaking numerous times on concerns and issues. They were told that legally they had no recourse, and the town could do nothing to stop Wynn Stanley from building. It was zoned correctly. These same citizens are here tonight to voice their concern about relieving Wynn Stanley of a substantial amount of taxes over a seven-year period. Does the same "there's nothing you can do to stop it, it's the cost of doing business" attitude apply to this tax assessment? I don't think that's an acceptable answer to the residents who have taken the time to speak and come out tonight. Why were they asked by Town Council members to come out and voice concerns if it doesn't really matter what they think anyways? The people have elected this council to echo their voice when voting on town matters and to hold the best interests of Enfield's residents first. Have the council members taken time to poll their personal constituents in their districts to help them decide on how to vote on this important issue? If not, what information are you using to guide your decision-making here tonight? Pertinent information pertaining to giving such a large abatement to Wynn Stanley must be clarified when it comes time for the council to comment and vote so that the citizens of Enfield will fully understand how you have reached your decision. However the council members choose to vote, I hope they are truly listening to what the majority of this room has brought forth in suggestions and concerns. We all have a vested interest in our town. We want Enfield to be a place we are proud to call home. Please make us proud to have you representing us, knowing we truly have a voice in our local government.
Joe Golds Jr., 31 Stardust Drive, in Enfield, Connecticut. I actually came to speak about the fact that we don't get to speak at the Board of Education, and I will do that briefly, but who am I? I was born and raised in Enfield, Connecticut. My first grade teacher was Mrs. Hawthorne. This is the property that Wynn Stanley is developing on. Before we had Departments of Education, I got an excellent education. Math, science, reading and writing. Matter of fact, in second grade, I was able to do multiplication, and Mrs. Wilson said, "How did you do that?" "Oh, you must have been Mrs. Hawthorne." Fourth grade, we were writing five to 10 pages. And cursed. Great education in Enfield. On top of that, I went into industry, defense electronics, communications electronics, communications electrics, molding, metals of all kinds, metallurgy. And then, I went into education because we had, if this was lower in the state, we had NAFTA, and a lot of businesses sold to large companies, and Air Force are a major factory and base for the debt in the 90s, so I went into education. My degree is in chemistry and biology. I have taught in 20 years, mostly chemistry, some biology, physics, environmental science, and anatomy and physiology. During that time, I have studied the issues of chemistry of energy, chemistry of the environment, and chemistry of nutrition and nutrition. My only comment about Wynn Stanley, I have various friends who live across from that, and they have expressed their great consternation about it. They also have said, and my son, who was a school worker, has said, "You know, Dad, when the Constitution of Thanksgiving and Christmas, we either go all the way to Kings Street, to get on 91, or we go to East Long Hill. Or we used to go, and then we'd say, we go past Jones Street and the law. We avoid Hudson Avenue, oh, that's why. With Wynn Stanley, you're going to have to avoid Thomas Street, and you're going to have to divert him. I agree with this, you can have the heavy trucks go all the way to North Maple." My son goes to the CBL white driver. My son goes to a CBL white driver. He drives 55-foot boxes, and then he drives the doubles. You know, 55-foot boxes, we're not able to handle that. My other issue is masks. I'm wearing one because this is what the CDC filed, which is, this is an N95 3M mask, which should form a complete seal on your face. I only wear it to mention that because all my life has been quality, quality of life. And that's the issue here tonight. Quality of our environment. I worked in the potato fields, and I worked in the apple. I worked for the village's egg farm. We used to have a large egg farm there. Enfield has excellent land. Ask you masks or soil. It has excellent soil. We are creating solar panels. We're even into, yeah, pollution of that one, and now we're creating buildings. One other comment from history. We had digital equipment here in our industrial park. And digital equipment was going to bring computer jobs, including car drives. HP moved that bottom up in California, took it to China. Number two, we had a CR here, which means solar panels for solar panels. That's now where the power hall of breweries. 140 jobs lost in 2010. For masks, here's the quality. This is a 3M, for those folks that want to wear masks, and if you see someone that have a wear mask, those are not sufficient masks. This is a sheet. It's called the ESDS, which is Personal Protective Equipment Safety Sheet. It covers all the conditions. This is a 3M mask. This is a mask made in China. Same thing, an N95. You're a consumer, which one would you buy? 3M, which does all the job. 95 means 95%. It means 5% of anything you get in. Or this, which is an N95. I don't know if that's a good word. That's poor. Hot mask and any other mask, warm mask, if you have a bad situation, does not work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. My name is Cheryl Cody, 92 Cottage Road. I know it's been a long night already, and I'm going to try to make this really short and sweet to the point for you. One thing, I'm definitely against this tax abatement. But I'm here today because I think it's important that we show our children that we should be standing up to what we believe in and what our rights are. This is a fantastic opportunity for us to speak in front of you. And I hope everybody has really listened to your constituents, to the people, your neighbors, your friends, because this is significant, the tax abatement. Our taxes are skyrocketed, right? Everybody has already told you, you know, we lost our garbage. You know, we only can have one barrel now. Things like that have already been taken away from us. But also, on top of it, we've been through COVID. And what has happened with COVID is, you know, our prices have gouged us. You know, our grocery bills, our electric bills, everything is nickeling-diming us to the point where we, many of us, I should say, have said, "I think it's finally time." I've been here 32 years in Enfield. And I'm finally thinking that maybe this is not the time, the town, to stay. Maybe I need to leave because I can't afford the taxes. And by giving another tax abatement to another company is just going to break the bank. It's going to have to come somewhere. You know, tax, the money doesn't just grow on trees, which I wish it did because I grow one now. But I can't now because of the wetlands are gone, and that's a whole nother story. So I know that you're tabling the vote. So I'm hoping that the reason for the tabling of the vote is to really take this seriously. I don't know how long you've had the documents in front of you to review, but if anything has been, what has happened in the past, is everything is thrown at the last minute. And we get the, we see an application, and we have to scramble and figure out, what does this application mean? From laypeople, people who live in this town, love this town, raise our children, our grandchildren. And that's the main reason why I'm speaking here today is because my grandchildren say, "Grandma, I am so proud of you for speaking up and saying what is important." And what's important is the town of Enfield and your neighbors, your friends that are here to support a non-tax abatement. We don't need that here in Enfield. We need more green space. We need those things that have been taken away from us. That big Bacon Road development that's going to be coming. What is that going to do for the town of Enfield? You know, we're seriously, the first time in our lives, thinking, "I think it may be time to move." And it may be time to move sooner than later because once we get that big warehouse in our backyard, our house will not be worth anything. So, but thank you for your time, and I really do appreciate if you would vote no to the tax abatement. Thank you.
Hi, Stacy Beagle, 55 Cottage Road. I just want to reiterate and agree with all the others that if they're getting a tax abatement, then the seniors especially should. Like my mom, she's 82. She pays $10,000 in taxes. That's a little crazy. But, so I think she should get an abatement too. And like somebody said, they don't need a tax abatement. They want to be here. I just want to say, if you had put them in the industrial park, I don't think you'd be getting such a pushback. Yes, everyone is correct that they are not doing anything for us residents, except bringing in money for taxes, which, yeah, we would all like more money for taxes coming into our town. But they are doing more harm than good. All the money they are bringing in is going to be going to fixing our infrastructure. So who wins? Not our town, not all of us, not any of you. If you put them near the highway in the industrial park off Hazard Ave and South Road, it would be easy, on and off, access for the truck drivers. I'm sure they would appreciate it, not having to go down Brainerd Road, North Maple, Bacon. Those are skinny roads, our street. So if a consensus was given to Wynn Stanley for a tax abatement before he's even started North Maple, we understand your dilemma. But I ask you, now what about Bacon Road? Are we going to be here three months having the same discussion? So please think about what we, all of us as town residents, are gaining by them building these buildings where they're being built. This town I grew up in is changing, and not for the better. Please think as people, not as a political party. Thank you for letting us speak. But it does no good if you're not hearing us and just appeasing us. We want you to think about this in your dreams, well, nightmares. Because this is what our thoughts are all day and night are, and it's not a very good quality of life. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Quill, and I live on 62 Cottage Road. I live near the Wynn Stanley complex on Bacon Road. Oh, I just said that, sorry. We've had an influx of tractor-trailer coming down our street. Please note, 35 Bacon is not even built yet. The roads in our community are small and not meant to carry the load of these trucks. We are a community-based neighborhood. Children ride bikes, families go for walks. If we have random truckers coming to our areas, getting lost every day in our quaint little neighborhoods, will the crime rate go up? Will the human trafficking rate go up in our town? What happens when the crime rate goes up and we want to sell our house? How would we sell our houses? People need to see the domino effect that this will cause down the road. There are possibilities for a variety of unsafe scenarios that could occur. I have four children that I'm trying to safely and properly raise. I knew Shaker Pine could offer that sense of comfort. What am I supposed to do now? I don't want to just move. I want to work on the town that I grew up in. My parents grew up here, my grandparents grew up here. My kids are also growing up here. Please vote no for our children. Thank you.
Ryan Moore, Town Rifle Drive. So I thought I'd ask some questions instead of making statements. Why did Planning and Zoning keep this project quiet for so long? Why did they only hold a public hearing at the 11th hour after someone was honest enough to let residents know that this backdoor deal was happening? Who benefits from this? What are the benefits to the residents? Did a council or Planning and Zoning members personally benefit from this deal? Are home values increased by this? Does this make Enfield more attractive to families? Are the costs of road maintenance increased by tractor-trailer traffic, even covered by Wynn Stanley if this abatement passes? Where are the jobs Wynn Stanley is bringing in? Is AgroMark bringing in the jobs? Is Eppendorf creating new jobs, or are we just swapping dollars? Is the reason for such an unreasonable abatement because we are afraid of losing Wynn Stanley development business, but not afraid of community loss? Is the reason the Wynn Stanley proposal on Bacon Road? If this was agreed upon by the previous council, why was it not voted on then? Are Wynn Stanley interests prioritized over the residents' interests? Is the Bacon Road proposal yet another done deal, regardless of how it negatively impacts residents? All of these questions I have found no answers for. Or worse, answers that did not look towards the interests of residents, but do satisfy the interests of Wynn Stanley. My final question is to the town residents. Why do we pretend that it matters who we elect when both parties sell out our interests in favor of developers who go back to their Greenwich Mansions while our town is turned into a concrete mausoleum? Watch this vote closely, and you may see what it means when a uniparty subverts the will of the people.
Good evening. Jonathan Grandy, 33 Spruessland Road. Town Council, thank you very much for hosting tonight in a larger auditorium where many can speak. We appreciate that. Mr. Wynn Stanley Corporation, thank you for investing in our town. I was going to come up and take the opposite side and make a joke out of it, but somebody beat me to the punch, and he did a fantastic job with that. So I'll just keep it short. Other speakers have done a way better job than I'll do. I think I speak for the majority, but I'm not sure, so these are my opinions. We are not anti-business. We are pro-business in this town. The reason for that is because businesses provide taxes, and businesses provide jobs. This, Mr. Wynn Stanley, does neither. If we can't have a business perform the way that businesses are supposed to, there's no sense to have this go forward the way it is. If you decide to ignore all your constituents and go ahead and make this abatement come through, then I ask that you put another clause on the contract that after the seven to 10 years, that after they leave, that they must tear down the building and restore it to the way it was before.
Susan Frappazzo, 50 North Street. The decision to build the monstrosity across the street is a travesty. The decision to allow yet another building to arise between Crescent and Shaker Pines Lake is a travesty. Giving a tax abatement would be a tragedy.
My name is Maureen Butler, 69 West Shore Drive. I can't add very much to the things that people have much more eloquently said earlier. I just would like to add my voice to say I'm against this abatement being offered. It certainly doesn't seem fair to the residents to have large, wealthy landowners come in and the residents' needs ignored. We already live with the noise pollution that comes from the smaller buildings that are already on Bacon Road. I can't imagine what it's going to be like on a lake when larger facility is there, more trucks are there. I would also like to throw out, we say that businesses bring in jobs. Whether they do or they don't bring in the jobs at this point in time, do we need the jobs? I don't have statistics. I haven't done that research. But there's hiring, people pleading for people to come work for me already. So right now, I don't see that as a big need. And I am hearing for the first time tonight about the trucks going down Cottage Road. And all I can think about is the fire department talking about the roads and whether the fire trucks could get down the road. What happens to the house that's burning on one end, the truck that's stuck in the middle, and the fire truck that can't get to that house that's burning down? I've seen a few houses burn down on Shaker Pines Lake. Thank you.
Neil Narcon, 5 Clear Street. I want to thank everybody for coming in and sitting through this whole thing here. But please listen to us. You know, just don't go through the motions here. I don't really know where to start with this one. There's a lot of stuff to discuss here. A lot of people ahead of me already did. But who are you working for now? I'll address that later. When you look at corporate America... And we don't need any more of this type of giving away programs to corporate that just gives money to everybody else here. The jobs they bring in, they're not really well-earning jobs. They're all so-called service sector jobs paying minimum wage that usually require a town to support them with social programs to help make their ends meet. So are they really helping out, or are they really sucking money out of the system? They're kind of like Walmart. When Walmart goes into a town, all the small businesses around them get sucked out. Crime rate goes up, you know, they rely on these services to do their work for them. But all in all, it's a cost to the town. The other thing too, I'm very appalled that we have a building, not a building, but a town planner that allowed something like this to go. I don't know if he's still on his staff, or whether we really need him, or whether we even listen to him. But I would think that industrial areas would have industrial-type facilities like this, which we wouldn't have to have this kind of discussion that there was. And leave residential people alone instead of evaluating the property for that. Or you put an Amazon building across from the school, this one. It doesn't belong there. It used to be a rural area. And I feel real sorry for all the people in these neighborhoods looking out their back doors instead of the tobacco field, not even looking at the building. And if anybody wants to envision what's coming down the road for that, just go down to Ellington. There's a place called Country Pride Juices or Country Pride Foods or something like that. It's right on Route 83 down on Main Drive. It's got all the huge sidewalks up front and everything else. And just park your car there and just listen to what's going on with the traffic and the noise, the equipment out there on and off, all the use back and forth for forklift riders, whatever. The other thing too is on refrigeration and things, and I know refrigeration. There was many evacuations in that area not too many years ago when there was a free-on-the, when they used ammonia in the system. And they still do today, a lot of commercial places do. But ammonia is a very toxic element to the humans. It's very environmentally safe, but that's really like... They're requiring massive evacuation of all the area there when they had that leak. And houses were not as close as they are. It's misty over there. Many of them, this place is... So that's something to keep in mind too, is down the road when you have an emergency, something like that. That building is not the law in residential area. Sorry, never did. Sorry, never did. My notes here. So we have zoning and planning runs a light department too, and I noticed they, my community in brass, a lot of smaller businesses, we have Yale Toyota using minus-mother as an overflow. They heard about that. Family of 40 here too noticed, bothering about them parking their cars in the back of their own field. We have Fort Don, Augustus, and five, and all he wanted to do was have his buddies over at the garage there, sit around the wood stove and talk about the good old days he's born, but he's a rapist. And that's just a few that come to my mind here. I don't have anything to think about this. But you have that going on, and at the same time, they allow a building like that to go in its place. It doesn't make any sense at all. It really doesn't make any sense. You know, what direction is this town going? And so who are you really working for? Are you doing corporate America? Are you working for everybody else here? What do you think about that? So thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Dale Ramadis, 11 Winterway. We are at a point tonight that we should never have gotten to, and it's been a result of a real lack of transparency on the part of the government elected officials and the town staff. Detailed proposed agreement was released a little more than 72 hours ago, but it appears that this has been under discussion for quite some time. Most of these discussions have been kept quiet, many of them under the dubious claim that they qualify for executive session privilege. The simple truth is, no one intended for this information to get out until right before a vote. But now we have all seen it, and the generosity and incentives is quite frankly shocking. The building is up, and that's in the past for people who lived near it. But it is there. You saw it when you came here, you'll see it when you leave, and you'll be dealing with it, the ramifications of it, for quite a long time. The issue now is different. This is about providing tax abatements, very generous tax abatements. Most of the tax-abating deals that I have seen reported don't even come up close to what is being offered here. Because of reevaluation, taxes are going to go up. Mine is going to go above 20% I assume. Most of the people here are just something similar. Reevaluation's happened, we all know that. It's quite hard to swallow knowing that part of my tax increases is going towards subsidizing a distribution center that provides nowhere to go. We're all assuming the benefits, we're all aware of the benefits of town, the way people are all impacted by town. If these benefits are there, we would all like to hear about that because no one has made any real effort to inform us about that. Aside from this generous abatement given, you may have noticed addition, in addition, there's quite a low rate value, and this is developing and no longer being included in the 2026 reevaluation. It also appears that there's inadequate funding for the fire district. Who pays this? Taxpayers, the town? If I am wrong, please tell me. I will listen. Please tell all of us. But the numbers that I have been able to put together make this deal seem even worse than the first one that has been available to us since we let our fire district chief. The story continues. Other projects are being continued and considered, and why would you expect us to believe that their tax-abatement requests will be fundamentally different? No matter what has happened in the past, there is nothing binding you to vote for this resolution. If you or your legal counsel believe that if we're legally bound to vote for this, then please inform us. Please openly say that. Because to the best of my knowledge, you are not obligated to vote for this. If you believe this is good for Enfield, which I think should be your only criteria for voting for, please make your case, present the facts. Things have not been transparent for far too long. I think the people of Enfield recognize the need for development, and a lot of it can be beneficial for this town. Chasing after businesses with extremely generous incentives, which will be negative to the town, is simply not warranted. I want to believe that you, I want you, I want to believe that you want what's best for Enfield. I believe that. And you have been made aware of the opinions and the well-thought-out oppositions of the public tonight. But I have to say, there's a lot of frustration out there, and I know that you have also heard it. But please remember, these residents also care about Enfield and what is best for Enfield. It's not just a case of not in my backyard. It's just, it's a case of what kind of community do we want Enfield to actually be? There is a proposal ready to be voted on. It has been discussed, presented to the community, and now it's time. Enough with the constant pushing for this favor. If as a group or an individual, you believe that the deal that you will and should be voting on tonight will be a good deal for Enfield, then rip the bandaid off now. Go ahead and vote. And then I ask you to own that vote and really explain why you believe in your vote. Actually, I insist, you vote to reject this agreement. I truly think it is a bad deal for Enfield. I think that the facts bear this out, but it is now up to you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Gumo, and I live at 19 Winterway here in Enfield. First, I would like to say that I understand that each of you volunteer your time to serve on this council. You all have families and lives and jobs outside of the time that you commit here. I would like to thank all of you who gave me some of your time by answering my emails and speaking to me by phone. I'm here tonight to speak about the proposed tax-abatement for the 113 North Maple, Winstanley Enterprise Warehouse property. As I mentioned in my email to you all, that I would be remiss if I did not say that this building has been on my radar since my family home of 24 years has been negatively impacted. I believe I told you all, and I will say it again, my husband and I agree, and we raise our children to believe that there will be many times that you have to look past what is good for you if it is good for someone else or the greater good. My goal in reaching out to you all was to seek information and ask questions in order to gain an understanding of the justification behind this proposed abatement. It is my understanding that in order for a business to receive a tax-abatement, they should add to the overall grand list and increase the value of particular property. There should be a sizable jobs creation component that would warrant the abatement, and the property should have minimal impact to the community and neighborhood. It is my understanding that this building is bringing zero jobs to Enfield residents, and the negative impact on the surrounding neighborhoods and family homes is significant. Many homes in my neighborhood have already suffered damage as a result of the construction. I also believe that regardless of the traffic study, we have not even begun to realize the dangers of having tractor-trailer traffic on roads not built for them in and around the adjoining neighborhoods, including a primary school. Giving a business a tax-abatement as a means of fostering a partnership for future development, I concede that it has to have merit. As I look for reasons behind the proposed abatement, I was able to speak with several of you and was given the following information. I was told that many towns give tax-abatements. I was also told what a tax-abatement was. I was told that there are some standard questions to consider when deciding whether or not to grant a business a tax-abatement. I was told that someone did not believe in tax-abatements at all. I was told that this building was built within the law. I was also asked, isn't collecting 50% of the tax better than collecting zero? I asked if the tax-abatement for this building was part of a larger deal, and was told that each building was considered independently. I was asked if there was any other part of town that housed a building of this size right next to a residential neighborhood, and I was told no. This was a first in Enfield. To my understanding, the only benefit this warehouse brings to the community is additional tax revenue. What does not make any sense to me is that we are considering allowing them to not pay their share of taxes to support our town. Regardless of the abatement proposal, there has been no clear communication of the benefit that this building is adding to the community other than tax revenue. According to the Town of Enfield's website, Enfield's economic development strategy is to retain, grow, and attract businesses, all while maintaining the character of the community. Is it part of the plan to let these large structures be built anywhere that is legal and collect less than half the full amount of tax? Just because something is legal does not make it right. The final thing that I would like to say is one thing I've heard over and over is that people are just mad that the building is going up. Now Bacon Road is going to go up, and you are seeing the same outpouring from the community as you did from the families in the Misty Meadow neighborhood, Rydefield neighborhood, North Maple Street, and Moody Road. I mentioned I've lived in this town for 24 years and have heard many times from the town council and the Board of Education that they're not hearing from the community. I have been told by several of you that you are receiving hundreds of emails. My hope is that you're listening. Given the information that I've gained, I still hold the position that I explained to you all. I do not feel that the 113 North Maple Street warehouse warrants a tax-abatement, and I am asking you to vote tonight and to vote no.
My name is Peter Genitis, 3 Farmstead Circle. And it's nice to see so many people come out and speak tonight, show up tonight, just be thankful the meeting wasn't last week. While I'm here, it's the first time I've been back in Fermi for quite a while. What a great place to build or use half this building for a vocational trade school. Okay, it was apparent that the chairman wanted to make a motion or have a motion made to table tonight's vote. I would hope someone up here would demand that a discussion take place on that motion. I don't care who started negotiations with Winstanley. What's important is who finalizes the agreement. This town council has had November, December, and January to nail this deal down. To finally come up with an agreement, I don't know what you guys have been doing those last three months, three months.
Good evening. Ed Denny, 19 Aloha Drive. 77 years I've lived here. This is the worst deal that ever existed. I spent my entire adult life donating my time to the Mont Carmel Society and all you people that live here in Enfield. Dinners, free halls, etc. Now we're giving 80% to a donor, Winstanley, a million dollars. Is he going to pay my Mont Carmel taxes? That would be out of business. Since 1926, we've been here in Enfield. We've donated the fields. If you haven't lived here, they play football on Mont Carmel's property. The town never paid a nickel. They played baseball on Mont Carmel's property. The town never paid a nickel. The Honor Society gets a free meal, a free donation for the hall every single year. The police explorers. I can go on and on. Now you want to give an abatement to a millionaire, but you want to put me out of business, the Mont Carmel out of business in two years.
Before we get to the second round, is there anybody else who has not spoken would like to come up and speak?
I moved here like a lady that spoke previously.
Name and address, please.
Bill Lookins, 5 Clear Street. Moved here in last spring at the, I don't know, urging of my son, he wanted to do a sarcastic story. So I moved here to retire. My assessment has, I've already received it, has gone up 28%. I moved here because the taxes seem, well, I don't like them, somewhat reasonable compared to other towns. Now they're up 28%. You're going to give this guy a big break. And like everybody else said, I can't add to what everybody said, but you're hurting the homeowner, the property, other property taxpayers, the small business people. One comment, question, I guess, more like, you said in your, going through your agenda, no special guests this evening, but yet you called out one person in this whole auditorium, Mr. Winstanley. Is that a special guest? Did you call out anybody else in this room? No. To me, he's a special guest as, he's almost one of you.
I'm going to say the last month is the Board of Education meeting. As far as understanding, the wall that is built between this town and the people who live here. We all said on Shaker Pineslake, I know we're here for the abatement. The thought that you guys would give an abatement to this warehouse is beyond me. If it's beyond me, will you do that it was built or that you want to allow the same thing to be built between two of us? Now the simple fact is, Enfield needs this money, the tax money, way more than Winstanley does. I can tell you that. Look around this building. It's a shambles. We apparently don't even have enough money to turn the lights on in the parking lot to Dr. St. The mess that we've left all over Enfield. Look at the school buildings that have been lost away from, that you drive by, that we don't even mow the grass on these abandoned buildings. Take the tax money from the Winstanley and take those buildings down, clean up the place they were, and fill them up.
Good evening. Lisa Rogers, 11 Winterway. It's my neighbor. I'm really thrilled that I have a new neighbor. Does a lot of building, shakes my house a lot, makes everything a dirt pile throughout the only six months that it's been happening so far. I apologize for my sarcasm. It was just that I got a kick in the face, basically, when my assessment came to my property under this bubble time that all of a sudden my house is worth $100,000 more. And yet, the next six months later, I find out that this property is assessed less. How did that happen? That I'm assessed more as a little resident and this major multi, multi-million dollar business is assessed less? I'm hearing good neighbor every time Winstanley says something. We've got an assessment, an abatement request that came through and forced on a fire district as we first found out about it. The second one came up this past week. It's worse than the first one. If you guys don't vote on it this time, what's going to happen the third time he comes back for the abatement? I don't feel that this is a good neighbor. A good neighbor cares about its surroundings, and it's just not happening right now. Thank you for your time in volunteering for our town. We did vote, new people in. We're hoping to see change. We're hoping to see that you represent the people that voted you in. Doug Finger, thank you. And I apologize for calling people out. I'm sorry. I want to thank the council for remembering the magic carpet bus drivers and the CARE Act. I believe that they went forward above and beyond, and that I hope they do get some reverence under the CARES Act.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in the first round? Have you decided on your, I don't know, whether you have a question, and I think you guys have volunteered, and you have talked about that, and I think the council people and chairman and others, maybe this is more about, get paid. This is all about my volunteer. I mean.
We had a major term on the panel of council and Board of Ed because you guys convinced the majority of us that you were gonna make a change. You can make a difference. This is what you can be known for, making a difference. You pledged to us, and we voted for you guys in, that you were gonna make a change. If this was already agreed upon, I get it, but you guys are voting on it. You guys can make the difference. Stand up on your feet if you made for us, that we'll just vote for you. That's all I say is, you know, you have a certain amount of time in life where you can make a difference.
This is it.
This is your time. Make a difference.
Hi, Rudy Lindig for St. Winston. Well, that's been said tonight. While everybody was talking, a few thoughts came to my mind, mostly after what the gentleman before me just said. There's a high level of distrust in government generally in America nowadays. A lot of people are frankly skeptical and distrustful. This comes down basically to a decision that the council has to make between a wealthy businessman and the town. Sadly, you folks drew the short card, and you're not, you're in the position to make that decision. My father-in-law was a select member of Massachusetts. I'm well aware of various battles that he fought during his twenties, and the time and personal time that he took to try and do right by this town. So, thank you all for your efforts, particularly you, Mr. Despard. You represent the district that's currently impacted the most. Well, you have a singularly unique opportunity to restore some faith and trust in at least local government, and this is your chance. This is your time. Try to do the right thing. Thank you.
Catherine Starman, 102 North Maple Street. I really do encourage you to vote because there's no reason to drive this out any further for people who are going for planning and zoning meeting Thursday. And having been a planning and zoning commissioner in the past, this is going to be passed. There's, they cannot vote no on. There's no reason for them to vote no. Their hands are tied. They're gonna have to vote, vote, vote yes for the project, unfortunately, for the new Win Stanley project. They may be able to tweak it a little bit, put a little conditions, some conditions on the property, but more than likely, it's gonna get passed. So, there will be another building, but I don't know, I can't say for sure, but their hands are tied. If they don't vote yes, they can be sued. So, having said that, I think that you, this council, again, thank you for taking the time for doing all this, should vote on this matter tonight. You have drawn this out long enough. Poor people are gonna be waiting for Thursday thinking, oh, maybe we have a chance. You know what? They don't. So, let's put this to a vote tonight. It needs to be voted on. It needs to be put to rest. We need to tell Mr. Win Stanley what this town is for and what we do. Why are you afraid of him? Why do we power to him and have to vote yes? You want to do what the people want, not what you want or what pockets are being filled.
I went to high school in the sixties. Peter Genitesch, still here. So, I just wanna get this whole group, everybody behind me who's been thinking along the same lines here, if I could just borrow you all for about ten seconds, and we all together clock it once. Vote tonight. Vote tonight. Vote tonight. Vote tonight. Vote tonight. Vote no.
Neil Narcom, Aganatia, Curtis Street. Anybody needs any further convincing that most of us don't want this, and I haven't seen anybody here that does, except for one person, $2,000 suit. From what my wife's telling me, there's over 200 people that are headed against this proposal as far as the tax agreement. Not even talking about the building itself, but the tax abatement, the plan, quite a lot, if you know what I mean. So, voted no. You know, this town is broke. We're over a million, a hundred million in debt with all the builders that the refer moves are going through. We can't afford anything like this here, putting a lot of people in there, being decimated by the economy that we're in right now, with a tax agreement just being, and this is not gonna help anyway. You know, the wealthy do not feel this at all. We, so, you know what to do. Get on the forum, those of you that phoned, you can see for yourself, you're the economists. There's a lot there is written. You've seen enough tonight, so leave the votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to come up for a second time? Is there anybody else that would like to come up before we close public communications? And I just would like to say thank you for everybody that came up and said what they had to say tonight. I am gonna ask for a short recess so that we can take a short little break. I will declare public communications closed. Okay. There will be a short recess. Thank you.[927.82]
To move forward with tonight's meeting.
Mr. Mayor, in the interest of all of the speakers that we just heard from, the weather, and the interest of time, I make a motion to move item E up for action now.
Second that motion.
Item E.
No, no, no. We have to all.
Oh, raising hands, vote. Okay, all in favor? The resolution to approve the tax assessment agreement for 113 North Maple Street. Whereas PPFWE 113 North Maple Street LLC owns the property at 113 North Maple Street. And whereas PPFWE 113 North Maple Street LLC is currently constructing a 502,000 square foot building to be used primarily as a warehouse, storage, and distribution facility. And whereas the town of Enfield and PPFWE 113 North Maple Street LLC negotiated the attached tax agreement agreement in accordance with the Connecticut general statute pursuant to the town's tax abatement guidelines. Now therefore be resolved that the acting town manager, Ellen Zapo Sasso, is empowered to enter into a tax assessment agreement subject to review and approval by the town attorney in the name of, on behalf of the town of Enfield with PPFWE 113 North Maple Street LLC, date completed January 7th, 2022, completed by office of the town attorney.
So moved.
Counselor Mangini.
Second.
Counselor Despard. Any comments? Any discussions?
I have a comment. So I just, I just want to say that, you know, this is democracy in action, what you're about to see, and I'm very touched to be a part of that. You know, we ran on change and this is what it looks like, but at the end of the day, you all stood up and you organized and you fought and we are hearing you. And there are people, and this council is a council, that does value your voice. And that's all I've got to say.
Counselor Sayetanella.
First of all, I want to thank all of you for coming here and saying what you had to say. You are mad, and I'm mad too. How this happened was absolutely unacceptable. And I want to be clear, this is not our mess that we created, but we are going to fix it. I was a member of this council for all of one hour when I saw the terms of this deal. And that night, I had a lot of questions and so did a lot of other people here. And they were the kinds of questions that made somebody rip their mask off and walk off the job. So if you want to connect the dots, those are the dots. We are committed to doing the work that you sent us here to do. And I can tell you, there are good people here who are dedicating a lot of their time to try to do that. Good people, every single one of them. And I don't agree with all the people here. I don't. It's just the nature of what we're trying to do. But I can respect them for disagreeing with them. And I'm not going to let this destroy all the other good work that we have ahead of us. And we need you to continue to come out and be, and let your voices be heard all along the way. I said when I was running for office, and for those of you who have followed, that municipal elections aren't about the White House or the State House that you see on CNN and Fox News and MSNBC. It's about your house, your taxes, the services we can provide you. This is it, right here. So I'm challenging all of you, the 20,000 people that are registered to vote in Enfield, only 7,000 people came out to participate in the last election. This is why you have to vote. Because only until you become more involved can we do the job that you need us to do. Now, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that we vote on this resolution.
My second that.
Counselor Mangini and then Counselor Pizzi.
I just want to thank all of the people who have come out and spoke and also those that are in TV land watching. And I do also want to thank our town staff. Our town staff has put a lot of energy and hard work into, you know, providing council with materials. And again, it is our job as a council to make informed decisions and to what is best for the people of Enfield. So again, I want to say thank you. I did, I received numerous emails, I returned several phone calls, and I have taken to heart every message that I received. Thank you.
Counselor Pizzi.
I too would like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I'm going to say right now, I'm going to abstain from this vote. And the reason I'm going to abstain from this vote is because the abatement that is in the packet was not the abatement they originally saw. There was another abatement that came out. I don't like the abatement in the packet. I'm not against abatements. I'm not against Mr. Win Stanley building in our town. And I am all for negotiating a good abatement. I don't think the one in the packet is good, so I will abstain my vote tonight.
Excuse me. I am going to ask for respectful behavior out in the crowd. I would greatly appreciate that. Everybody can come up here. We listen to you. We have some things that we have to say. I am demanding excellent behavior. And if you can't, I'm going to ask you to leave.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Finger.
Good evening. Is this thing on? Cool, thank you. So I want to thank the people that sent me emails and reminded me, which I never have forgotten, what my bio was when I started to run. I'm not a politician by definition on the property taxpayer's voice. And that's what I'm doing tonight. I just want to let everybody know that and thank you very much for showing up.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. First of all, to all the people that have given me emails, sent me emails, talked to me personally. I greatly appreciate everybody's opinion. I didn't really give my full thoughts to everybody when they were giving me a call because my job is to listen to all of you. And I did listen to all of you. So I greatly appreciate that. We heard you loud and clear. And people were probably saying, oh, he doesn't know what he's doing. He, you know, he's not going to say anything. He's going to fold or whatever. No, I listened to the people. I listened to you. And I am going to be voting no on this abatement. Are there any other comments?
I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out and we really listened to all your thoughts, your words, your concerns. I hear the heart of everything of what you're saying. I do want to say I support business in town. I'm not exactly pleased with some of the different proposals that we've been given. And, and we have many sleepless nights that we just think about everything that you say and try to make the right decision. So I appreciate you coming here tonight.
Attorney Toliver.
Mr. Mayor, if all the counselors have spoken fairly briefly, I had prepared about four or so pages to debate this, but I will keep it brief. Thank you all so much. Take this off here. Thank you all so much for coming out and speaking tonight. It is just really heartening to see democracy in action. At the end of the day, I think we have to decide what kind of community we want. And I think we have to make sure we're providing tax incentives that really effectuate that vision. So thank you all again.
Attorney Toliver.
Mr. Mayor, if all the counselors have spoken, I am compelled as your town attorney to recommend that you table it and not vote on this tonight. As I've indicated, it is not ready. But if the council is going to express its prerogative and disregard the advice of its council and staff, I think at the very least, the developer, the applicant wished to be heard. I think you could afford him that courtesy, at the very least.
Mr. Win Stanley, would you like to speak, please?
Listen, we spent over two hours listening to everybody and we are listening, so we need to continue to listen. Please be respectful.
Guys, thank you for the, the opportunity to, to speak tonight. I think it was the process that we're going through is a little bit confusing. It wasn't clear to me if I was supposed to come tonight, not supposed to come tonight, wasn't clear if I was allowed to speak, not allowed to speak. But I certainly understand that I am also a taxpayer in this community. I have three buildings here that pay currently 1.5 million a year in annual taxes. And I'd like my voice to be heard. I, I want to express my story of how I came to this town, the tax deals that have been offered to me by other administrations, and how we got to this point. And I, I find it like very odd that there's like a vote occurring right now when I have been like working tirelessly for like months trying to figure out how this can work for both groups. And so I'm going to now take my time to explain how I think this should happen. And then what I'd like to do is I want to answer everybody's questions here, okay? Because there is so much misinformation that's out there right now. And if we want to talk about jobs and we want to talk about taxes and we want to talk about all the details of how this agreement came together, there's nothing going on behind closed doors. Let's get it all out in the open, let's talk about it. Okay? So let's start, I'm going to roll everybody back, everybody's time clock back to 2016. When I first came to Enfield for the first time, I'll admit, even though I've been investing in Connecticut for 32 years, I've done 45 projects, I've worked throughout the entire state, I've never been to Enfield before. I came here to look at the Hallmark complex in 2016. Hallmark had just announced that they had 1,700 jobs were going to be, people were going to lose their jobs and they were shutting down. And I walked through the facility and I looked at the building and I said, this is like, I think I can do something here. I, I feel like this is a decent property. I've done redevelopment projects all over the state, mostly rehabs of existing buildings. After I completed my site visit, I called on the town manager, Brian Chudkowski, and I came down and I met with Brian in his office. And he said, Adam, we would love to have you come to our town. We'd love to have you tackle this project. He said, we are in dire straits right now. And he offered me a tax deal. He said, we'll do whatever it takes to get you guys moving on this property. And that's the truth. And that tax deal, that agreement got hammered out with the town. The town staff, the town attorney, they put that agreement together and it was a modest agreement. It's 35% off for the first seven years. And that, that agreement did help me attract tenants. I've invested $41 million to turn that building around. It has generated jobs. It has, the tax agreement is mostly burned off right now. I took a building in the rear of their property that was identified as personal property and I basically rebuilt it and created a new warehouse that is now fully leased. The companies that are here, one of the companies, I moved from Boston to Enfield. This is a successful complex. And after I completed that project, I want people to know the history. I want people to know the truth. After I completed that project, the town manager then said, Adam, he said, if you can do new construction in this town, he said, I will give you a tax deal. I will give you 50% off your taxes for 10 years at either your 35 Beacon property or 113 North Maple.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move to a floor vote. I just, I don't think this is the forum for this. I think public communication is closed. I think public communication is closed and I think we should move to vote. That's my motion. Do I have a second?
Somebody second my motion?
Second.
I would like my, I would like my opportunity to, to speak. I don't think that that's appropriate. I've listened to everybody else's comments.
Excuse me, excuse me. Thank you. We were going to vote on the motion. All in favor?
Hold on, just to be clear, as a point of order, Mr. Mayor, is that the motion to move to the floor?
Didn't you do a motion for immediate vote?
Yes, I moved, I, my motion is to bring this to the floor for a vote.
That's what we're voting on. That is correct. All in favor?
Let's just be clear here. This is not the main motion. This is just to close the speaker. You're not going to, that's what it is.
This is to move, this is to move, yes, to close the speaker and move to a vote.
To make the speaker stop talking? Is that what this is?
I think public communication is closed in the city and we don't, we don't have a special guest on, on, on the agenda.
Well, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me. We're, we're going to vote on it. All in favor?
Of moving to a floor vote.
Against?
We should allow him to do, to finish it. We should allow him his five minutes. People in the audience, y'all, give him, you've got five minutes, you've got five minutes.
We closed. We closed respectfully. Please continue.
Guys, whatever's appropriate, if, if the town council doesn't want me to tell my story anymore, I'm fine to stop, but I'd like to be at the opportunity to speak as well because it wasn't clear if I was supposed to speak at the end or not, so. So after, after I completed the Hallmark project, a more aggressive tax abatement was offered to me by the town manager. And that tax abatement, again for the record, was, it was 50% off the taxes for 10 years if I could bring new, new construction projects to this town. The first project that I've brought forward is, is 113. And over the last couple of months, I, I have been, I was in communication with the prior town manager and ultimately that agreement and the representations that he said to me are representations that I made in the market with my tenants. It's unfortunate because those tenants, although the, the tax agreement is, my leases are not tied to having a tax agreement, the tax agreement was offered to me and so I communicated that to tenants and that's part of the reason why they have come to my, my properties here. It's important to note that this is not a tax abatement. This is a phase in of taxes. And so where we are today is I'm in a really awkward place and it's unfortunate that we have to land here where there's not an opportunity to try and put a fair deal together. I've never said that I want to pay no taxes here. That, that's not appropriate. That's not what we're talking about here. What I've been working on the last couple of weeks is an agreement that was initially offered to me and I've offered to be flexible. The town has approached me and said, Adam, would you consider shortening the term up? I said, yes. I said, they said, can you look at a seven year deal? I said, fine, we can look at a seven year deal. The only thing that's happened so far is we've battled around different ideas. I'm collaborating with the town to try and come up with something that works. I'm not looking to pay no taxes. I want a fair deal because that's what's been given to me by two different administrations. And I can't help it if like the town manager quits and then everybody is like new on this council. I'm just trying to run my business and so it puts me in a weird spot. At the end of the day, I don't think it's fair right now. And I have worked really hard to come up with a fair deal and I'm willing to be flexible and that's pretty much it. I mean, I don't have anything else further to say. I've negotiated in good faith. I've negotiated in good faith, I'm willing to be flexible, it doesn't have to be a certain way. And with that being said, I'd like to see if anybody else in the town council has any other questions that they would like to ask me about. The history of this account, what tax agreements have been offered in the past, how we got to where we are today. I mean, this whole process has just turned out to be, you know, very, I don't know, it's just, it seems kind of awkward, but.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me.
Nick, I was wondering if any of the town councilors here, if anybody has any questions that they would like to ask me about this account, anything that's transpired on how we got to where we are today.
Yeah. I don't think this is the time for back and forth, Mr. Winstanley.
Then I'm all set, thank you. Thanks for everybody's time tonight.
Before we do roll call, I'd like to thank Mr. Winstanley for his comments and for sitting through and listening to everybody else's comments. Sheila Rollcall?
Counselor Ludwick.
Counselor Mangini.
Against.
Counselor Pisner.
Abstain.
Counselor Santinella.
Against.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Abstain.
Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Against.
Mayor Crissati.
Against.
Counselor Despard.
Against.
Counselor Finger.
Against.
Counselor Hopkins.
Against.
That's zero in favor, seven against, and three abstentions.
Still, please maintain order, thank you. Next on the agenda will be Counselor Communications, Counselor Mangini.
Thank you. Just wanted to echo Lucian's statement and invitation regarding the four chaplains. He gave a very good overview of what happened on February 3rd, 1943, with the German U-boat torpedoing our USAT Dorchester, and I would encourage people to, if you can, attend the mass, or at least show respect to what these four religious individuals did and gave to our country. Thank you.
Just want to let people know who are gonna, who need to challenge their assessments, especially any of the 490s or anything that's been going on. March 18th is the deadline to fill out the application. You can get the application on the town website and the tax assessor's office. Please make sure you fill out the application for the 18th if you want to challenge your assessment. It's the 18th of March, and that's when you have to, you have to get the application in, accept it, you'll go forward to the Board of Appeals in April or May. I know there's a lot going on out there, we're working on it, but you have to the 18th. It's very important that you, again, you fill your application out if you want to appeal your assessment. Thank you.
Any other Counselor Communications? I'd like to make a statement here. It's a pleasure to announce that Enfield did receive a grant for $548,000 for the Elm Street sidewalk gap closure. The governor, along with the transportation commissioner, announced that Enfield received a grant from the Competitive Grant Program for local projects that support improved mobility and accessibility, as well as pedestrian and bike safety. So in the area that, where this gap is going to be is by the Asnuttuck Community College, it would also extend to the corner of Shaker and Elm Street. The other thing that I want to mention is, I had the pleasure this weekend of attending a ceremony for an Enfield resident that performed an act of kindness to an Ellington family during the holidays. Ms. Worthington, who's a mail carrier, you know, she resides in Enfield, she's a mail carrier out in Ellington, surprised a family with a comforting gift after the family had just lost their father and the wife's husband. And I was able to present her with a certificate of appreciation on her act of kindness, along with Representative Jamie Foster and Representative Hall. And it was very heartwarming to hear this particular story, but I just wanted to share that. So congratulations, on behalf of, you know, the town of Enfield and the council. Thank you to Ms. Worthington for her wonderful act to help this family in need. One other thing I just want to mention is the Senior Tax Aid Program at the Senior Center. Enfield Senior Center will, once again, be hosting Department of Health Mobile Vaccine Clinics on Friday through March 18th, and staff from Griffin Health will also provide first and second booster shots for adults 12 and older. And that's all I have for Counselor Communications. Anyone else? Okay. Town manager report?
Due to the lateness of the hour, no report.
Okay, town attorney?
There's nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Report on any special committees? Okay, none? Okay. Old business, that is still tabled, 12A. We go to new business, consent agenda A is none, B is none, C is none, D is none. We go to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is the resolution accepting a donation from Home Depot. The resolution states resolve that in accordance with Chapter 7, Section 2 of the Town Charter of Enfield. Okay, excuse me. Wrong one, okay. The resolution accepting the donation from Home Depot. The Home Depot wishes to donate a $1,000 gift card to the Enfield Police Department for the betterment of department operations for the acquisition of equipment or supplies that will impact and benefit the department as a whole. And whereas the Connecticut General statute permits the town to accept gifts of personal property for municipal purposes, now therefore be resolved that the town council does accept this donation from the Home Depot. Any discussions on the consent agenda? All in favor? I'll read the other one, too, okay? Resolution adopting the new deputy director, which I started reading. Okay. Resolved in accordance with Chapter 7, Section 2 of the Town Charter, the Enfield Town Council does hereby adopt a new job description for deputy director of capital, project, and administration. Any discussion? All in favor? We have ten in favor, none against, no abstentions. Next is appointments. Town council appointed North Central Health Department Board of Directors, Representative Term of Office of Greg Stokes expired on June 30th, 2021, and the replacement will be until 6/30/2024. Do I have a nomination?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Brandon Jewell, please.
Second.
And Counselor Hopkins, second. Are there any other nominations? Okay, do I have a nomination to close?
Second.
Second, Counselor Mangini. All in favor? Against? Abstentions? Ten in favor, none against. Sheila Rollcall?
Counselor Ludwick.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Brandon Jewell.
Counselor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Brandon Jewell.
Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Brandon Jewell, I said, I didn't know if you heard, sorry.
Mayor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Despard.
Four.
Counselor Finger.
Brandon Jewell.
Counselor Hopkins.
Four.
Ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Okay, moving on to the inland wetlands, I'd like to commend these residents who have volunteered to serve. This is a difficult, very important panel, and we thank the following people for stepping up, and we will go through each one of them. Inlands and Wetlands, Water Course Agency, the Turbo Officer Jade Smith expired on June 30th, 2020, replacement will be until June 30th, 2024. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate Nancy Martin.
Okay.
Second.
Second, Counselor Mangini. Do I have a nomination to close?
Make a nomination to close?
Second.
And Counselor Mangini. All in favor? There are ten in favor, none against, no abstentions. Sheila Rollcall?
Counselor Ludwick.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Nancy Martin.
Counselor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Nancy Martin.
Mayor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Despard.
Four.
Counselor Finger.
Nancy Martin.
Counselor Hopkins.
Four.
Ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Inland and Wetlands, Water Course Agency, vacancy exists due to the resignation of Robert Shagnon. Replacement will be until June 30th, 2023. Do I have a nomination?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Ann Collins. She is a retired geologist, she has extensive experience in biology and environmental sciences, and I think she's gonna be a wonderful addition to that board.
Are there any other nominations?
Second.
Second, okay. Counselor Mangini, thank you. Do I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Mr. Feier, second.
Second.
Counselor Hopkins. All in favor? Against? Abstentions? Ten in favor? None against? No abstentions? Sheila Rollcall?
Counselor Ludwick.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Ann Collins.
Counselor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Ann Collins.
Mayor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Despard.
Four.
Counselor Finger.
Ann Collins.
Counselor Hopkins.
Four.
Ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Inlands, Wetlands, Water Course Agency, a vacancy, a vacancy exists due to the resignation of Marcy Tolicio, replacement will be until June 30th, 2023. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate Sean Dean.
Counselor Hopkins, the second.
Second.
Counselor Despard. Any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Okay, motion to close. Counselor Mangini. All in favor? Against? Abstentions? There are ten in favor, none against, no abstentions. Sheila Rollcall?
Counselor Ludwick.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Sean Dean.
Counselor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Sean Dean.
Mayor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Despard.
Four.
Counselor Finger.
Sean Dean.
Counselor Hopkins.
Four.
Ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Okay, 14C, town manager appointed, council approved. There are none appointments, P and Z, appointed, council approved. Capital Region Council of Governments, Regional Planning Commission, Enfield residents, regular member. Vacancy exists due to the expiration of Virginia Higley. Replacement will be until 12/31/2022. And the second one, do I do it individual, or I can do it together? Individually, okay. All right. Okay, do I have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Frank Alamo.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
And Counselor Hopkins. All in favor? Ten in favor, here's none against, no abstentions. Capital Region Council of Governments, Regional Planning Commission, Enfield residents, vacancy exists due to the expiration of Frank Alamo. Alamo replacement will be John Petronello until 12/31/2022. I just said the nomination. So nomination?
Second.
Yeah, you can tell, I'm getting tired.
It's getting late.
All right. So, all in favor? Ten in favor for that appointment. Okay, next, discussion resolution. Resolution to adopt wage adjustment for the positions in the following compartments. The first one is a resolution for, okay, for Public Works Finance, Human Resources, and the Town Attorney's Office. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 7, Section 2 of the Town Charter of the Enfield Town Council, does hereby adopt a wage adjustment on the following positions. Deputy Director of Operations, $150,000; Payroll Clerk, $70,100; Benefits Administrator, $69,449; Personnel Coordinator, $66,839; And part-time attorney, hourly rate, $90 per hour, paid, submitted February 2nd, 2022, submitted by Steve Belinda, Human Resources Director.
So moved.
Counselor Mangini?
Second.
Second. Counselor Finger? Any discussions?
I would like, my opinion is, I think we're going into budget. We're very close to the budget, and I'd like to see these positions added into that budget. I just think it's too close to budget to put them forward now.
Okay. Any other? Yes, go ahead.
I agree with Counselor Pisner, I think this should be discussed during our budget sessions.
Counselor Mangini?
I have to disagree, because initially I felt the same way, but after understanding the circumstances that we are faced with prior to budget, it's imperative that we pass this and that we go forward tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Ludwick?
Just curious, so on the cover letter, it says, funding for the increase in the above referenced position will be transferred from a vacant position in finance. Just, I guess, maybe, you know, that shouldn't have to be on a resolution, what we are transferring from one line into another? If we're not replacing that position? It's not in a resolution, just curious, but it's saying in the cover letter.
I thought it was a resolution, right here.
It's only saying $11,000.
That's on the next resolution.
You're saying that one position is only $11,000?
Good afternoon, or good evening, Steve Belinda, town HR director?
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I thought it was on the second. John Wilcox prepared the resolution for the second, for the transfer.
You all chose $11,000, so just go back and transfer to the position.
Well, he didn't break it down?
Okay. Fair enough.
All right. I don't usually draft the transfers.
No problem, okay. Thank you.
We hit the vote on this one right now? Okay, roll call.
Counselor Ludwick.
Against.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Pisner.
Against.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Against.
Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Four.
Mayor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Despard.
Four.
Counselor Finger.
Four.
Counselor Hopkins.
Four.
That's seven in favor, three against, and no abstentions. That's seven in favor, three against, and no abstentions.
Discussion Resolution Request for Transfer of Funds for Wage Adjustments, $11,074. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8 of the Town Charter. The following transfer is hereby made to Human Resources. Salaries $6,924, Social Security $430, Medicare $102, Town Attorney salaries $3,360, Social Security $209, Medicare $49. From Treasury salaries $11,074. Certification, I hereby certify that the above stated funds are available as of February 2nd, 2022. John Wilcox, Director of Finance, approved by Ellen Zappo Sasso, Town Manager, date February 2nd, 2022.
So moved.
Counselor Mangini, second. Counselor Despard, any discussions? Sheila Roca?
Counselor Ludwig.
Against.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Pizner.
Against.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Against.
Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Four.
Mayor Kasati.
Four.
Counselor Despard.
Four.
Counselor Finger.
Four.
Counselor Hopkins.
Four.
Seven in favor, three against, and no abstentions.
Discussion Resolution Request for Transfer of Funds for Public Works to close out the Elkhorn remodel for $14,090.72. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8 of the Town Charter. The following transfer is hereby made to Elkhorn Remodel Construction Services, $14,090.52 from Electrical Construction Services, $7,929.72. Fleet Equipment New, $4,977.82. Fleet Other Professional Services, $1,182.98. Certification, I hereby certify that the above stated funds are available as of February 3rd, 2022. John Wilcox, Director of Finance, approved by Ellen Zappo Sasso, Town Manager, date February 4th, 2022.
So moved.
Counselor Mangini? Second. Second. Counselor Finger, any discussions? Sheila Roca?
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Pizner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Four.
Mayor Kasati.
Four.
Counselor Despard.
Four.
Counselor Finger.
Four.
Counselor Hopkins.
Four.
10 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Request for Transfer of Funds from General Fund for this transfer station, $79,000. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8 of the Town Charter. The following transfer is hereby made from the General Fund from the General Fund account unallocated contingency, $79,000 to the General Fund unallocated transfers to Capital, $79,000. Capital and nonrecurring fund from CIP Fund Review from 2021 to 2022. General Fund transfers in to the transfer station construction services, $79,000. Certification, I hereby certify that the above stated funds are available as of February 1st, 2022. John A. Wilcox, Director of Finance, approved by Ellen Zappo Sasso, Town Manager, date February 1st, 2022.
So moved.
Counselor Mangini?
Second.
Counselor Despard, any discussions? Sheila Roca?
Counselor Lud-
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mike.
Sorry.
Just clarifying.
Counselor Ludwig.
Sorry, my bad. Be quiet. So, the two scales, is that including the final project? Is that correct?
Question.
Yes.
Yes?
It is.
It is?
Two scales.
It'll be two scales? Do we know any idea how much the two scale is going to cost?
I know a second scale would be $98,000.
$85?
That's one of the alternatives.
Obviously, I'm all for the project. I'm just not for a second scale. So, understand, this will take two budgets, correct? Now it's over the referendum minutes, so it'll start in one budget year then finish in the next?
I think so.
Do you want me? I can feel this.
Because now it's over the, it's over the bonding lines. I'm just curious.
So the second transfer is for the $300,000 and that is for the infrastructure sinking fund? And it has been confirmed with bond, council.
That that funding can be designated for this project at the time?
So now the project is above our referendum limit, so it's going to go in two budgets, correct? Is that how we're going to do this project?
No.
We can't do it all in one year without going to a referendum?
No, I believe what she just said is we can because we're using sinking fund.
Because we use the sinking fund or they say we don't have to go to a referendum? I don't think it's a different question.
Yes, that's exactly what the sinking funds are used for when we created them.
I agree, but I think that's a different question.
I think John did say that it was going to go through two budgets. I thought that's what he said.
Yes. I don't think the sinking fund prevented us from not, you know, admitting to the spending limit of the charter. I just think it's money we could use for specific projects that we kept in the budget here over here. I think we actually have to spend it. We have to do it in two different budgets, right? Because then it goes over. Because now it's a million dollar project. If you spend a million dollars on a project technically it should be going up the referendum. I was reading it wrong.
I don't think that's how it's being interpreted by the finance office, but we can find out from Mr. Wilcox tomorrow and send a communication out to everyone.
Just want to make sure we're covered, that's all.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Roca?
Counselor Ludwig.
Against.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Pizner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Counselor, Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Four.
Mayor Kasati.
Four.
Counselor Despard.
Four.
Counselor Finger.
Abstained.
Abstained. Counselor Hopkins.
Four.
That's eight in favor, one against, and one abstention.
Discussion, Jay. Discussion Resolution Request for Transfer of Funds from Town Infrastructure Sinking Fund for the Transfer Station Project, $300,000. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8 of the Town Charter. The following transfer is hereby made to the Town Infrastructure Sinking Fund. Transfer Station Construction Services, $300,000 from the Town Infrastructure Sinking Fund unallocated contingency, $300,000. Certification, I hereby certify that the above stated funds are available as of February 1st, 2022. John A. Wilcox, Director of Finance, approved by Ellen Zappo Sasso, Town Manager, date February 1st, 2022.
So moved.
Counselor Mangini?
Second.
Second. Counselor Despard, any discussion? Senator, Sheila Roca?
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Pizner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Four.
Mayor Kasati.
Four.
Counselor Despard.
Four.
Counselor Finger.
Abstained.
Counselor Hopkins.
Four.
That's nine in favor, none against, and one abstention.
Okay, Discussion Resolution. Resolution waiving the bid requirements for the design of the municipal parking lot expansion at the Enfield Express Resolution. Whereas the Town of Enfield through its Town Council is currently reconstructing Higgins Park in the Town of Enfield. And whereas SLR International Corporation has contributed important design and engineering work to this project and in creating these designs has gained particular valuable technical knowledge and insight into this project which is unavailable to other engineering firms. And whereas the further design and engineering work is required for the Higgins Park parking area which is located behind the Enfield Express. And whereas SLR International Corporation's prior work on the Higgins Park project makes them uniquely qualified to perform this work. Now therefore be resolved that the Town Council does find based on the foregoing compelling public interest in accordance with Chapter 5, Section 8D, that is therefore against the best interest of the town to solicit bids for the design of the municipal parking lot expansion at the Enfield Express. Date submitted January 28th, 2022, appeared by Department of Public Works.
So moved.
Counselor Mangini?
Second.
And Counselor Despard, any discussions? Sheila Roca?
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Pizner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Four.
Mayor Kasati.
Four.
Counselor Despard.
Four.
Counselor Finger.
Four.
Counselor Hopkins.
Four.
10 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Okay, 15 miscellaneous, there is nothing. 16, Public Communications? Is there anybody who'd like to speak? Public Communications are closed. Counselor Communications? Deputy Mayor Sakala?
Thanks. I just want to thank ETV and all of their hard work so we could get here tonight because we wanted to make sure we had enough room. So I really appreciate everybody at ETV. And I'm sure the whole community appreciates us being here. Also, I personally want to thank both the Town Attorney and the Town Manager's Office. We have run them ragged in the last couple of days and they have been responsive and respectful. And I just, I really appreciate all of their hard work and I just want you to know that. Everybody at the Town Manager's Office and the Town Attorney. That's it.
I have to second that myself. These last few weeks have been very difficult weeks for everybody. Our Town Manager has gone above and beyond in what she has been dealing with, and same with our Town Attorney. I thank both of you for your hard work and everything that you do for our town. And once again, this is actually, the venue turned out pretty good here tonight. And I do have to say, I'm not that cold. I'm actually, you know, it's nice heat in here. So, you know, that part of it, but.
Oh, and welcome back, Kasia.
Yeah, and Kasia, welcome back, yes. And, you know, thank you for, you know, everybody. It's been, it's been a long night. If there's no other communications, I make a motion to close.
Second.
Second. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.